Great, I'd like to begin the regular Select Board meeting for the town of Brookline, Vermont. The time, it is August 17th, 2022. The time is 6:35. And let's have a start. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add discussion of the tree removal at Susie's.
Okay, discussion of tree removal at Susie's under your building commissioner's report.
Well.
And I would like to ask if you talked about the work to be done just past the driveway to 1068 Athens Road, the former Cornish property? We didn't create an RFP for that, didn't we?
We did not, we thought it was going to be less than the RFP purchase policy numbers.
It's done, isn't it?
Yes, it's
It is done.
Already went very well.
Oh.
It went one day.
Okay.
Right.
Wow.
Anything else to change in the agenda?
Well, maybe just acknowledging this.
Okay, I can bring that up in your report.
Sure.
All right. Hearing no other, let's, I am going to make a motion to table the the minutes from August 3rd, 2022, as I have not read them yet to review. And they just got posted today. Yeah. But is that, make a motion to table the minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Hearing none, I shall table the minutes from August 3rd. Those approving, let me get my words right, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I will add it to the agenda for all, for the September meeting. Thank you. Let's review and approve the minutes for the special meeting held on August 9th, 2022. Any items on page one that needs to be modified? Actually, let me do this, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting from Tuesday, August 9th. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion?
Maybe.
Any changes from the
I don't know if I got this one or the last. Was there any discussion of RFPs? No, I think the mistake I found is on Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, okay, almost there.
Any changes on page two?
I've done the entire document to be okay.
Yeah.
Any changes on page three? No, any changes on page four? Hearing none, the motion's been made and seconded, no further discussions. All those in favor are approving the minutes from the special meeting from August 9th as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. All through the minutes are accepted as presented. Okay, members of the public? We have none, I just would like to make note that we have present in the room Stan Noga, Bruce Mello, Don Maggio, Mark Bills, and I always forget your name.
Josh.
Josh from our Back TV videographer. Okay, any unscheduled members of the public, no one's here. Next item on our agenda under new business is to open the request proposal bids for winter plowing and sanding. We received one bid for winter plowing.
Settle for just one year.
I have the, I have the RFP if anyone would like to review.
No, all right.
Okay. The bid is from, solitary bid we received is from A.S. Clark &amp; Sons. It says, winter plowing and sanding for the 2022-2023 season. We bid $40,000 for plowing, sanding, and salting of town highways, recycling center, town office parking lot, and meeting house driveway for the winter of 2223. Payment due on the first month as in the past, $10,000 for January 1st, $10,000 February 1st, $10,000 March 1st, and $10,000 April 1st. This does show an increase over previous years, but we do understand that there have been some additional costs. Um, in the past, it, how much, I don't have that number in front of me.
I'm gonna guess it, it's like 33?
Oh yeah, it's nice one.
Yeah, so it looks like it's like a good $7,000 more, yeah. It does include the general liability insurance certificate, and of course, we will complete a contract for that. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid, and then we will have a discussion, and if we can, if you might have, so I'll I'd like to make a motion that we
That's a fact.
Accept the bid from A.S. Clark &amp; Sons for winter plowing in the amount of $40,000. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan Noga, discussion? Yeah, yeah, costs have gone up. Although we have to say that as, for as many years as I recall, it has been made fairly consistent, the plow bid, the plowing bids, and there is no, um, well, just, you know, unclarity as far as what the cost is, is there's no like conditions, whereas like fuel prices fluctuate or anything like that, which was hard to take, keep track of in the past.
I went through the, uh, the budget, which our town assistant treasurer provided as of 71. And for the fiscal year 22,
Okay.
the total of winter contract services and equipment was $41,861.54.
So we saw the same, right?
Uh, that was contract services.
Contract.
The materials were $22,954. So there, I don't know if there's anything added to the contract, we have a copy of the contract, I probably haven't filed yet, you can check exactly what that was.
Seems like you might have.
But that's what, that's what the treasurer says we paid for that.
I do believe that there was some gravel purchased in the wintertime for, for the road systems that should have been kept under summer contract, but were billed to winter contract. The only thing under winter hours should be the salting and sanding and plowing. So that was something we need to bring to the treasurer's attention, and
Judy is aware of it. She goes, she asked me questions about that way back when we were going through the transition assistant treasuries. As, and she, she came here, if you were Oh, okay, uh, in any event, I, uh, I'm not sure there's any kind of misunderstanding with the assistant treasuries that we have. I suspect that in terms of, I, I'm surprised to see the 22,000 there, I mean, it's probably worth asking them what it is. But I know that in a discussion I had with Judy Ekincoro back in May, maybe early June, she was confirming her understanding of it, and maybe something has slipped through, but she had an understanding at the time.
I believe the 22,000, that might have been salt. Right, would that, would that have been the purchase of, of all the loads of salt, I'm not sure how many tons of that we got. That's not what we're, that's not what we're doing right now, or take the, uh, plow was in the 30,000 range before. And the other discussion? I didn't answer your questions, Stan.
Oh, no, it's no problem, I mean, I, that's what the numbers say by the treasurer, now how'd she got them is all under question.
Okay.
So God only knows.
Okay, so you're saying that it was 41,000, even if it's
That's good.
I'm not saying that's what the contract was, that's what the number she says we spent on.
Right, and then additionally, $22,954 was spent in the wintertime, for a total of 45, 63, for a total of approximately $65,000 last winter. $65,000. All right, something to take a look at, and, um,
The forest storms.
Sixty five.
I think I've lost three pounds.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the winter contract bid for plowing and sanding our highways from A.S. Clark &amp; Sons for the price of $40,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All three are in favor, the contract is passed? And that is the first RFP of this evening? Accepted, A.S. Clark &amp; Sons. The next RFP is for the winter sand bid. Unfortunately, they did not bring their fourth sample of sand. However, we probably have several courts in the basement for the sand yard, I'm not too worried about that at this time. All right, A.S. Clark &amp; Sons have submitted a bid for, for the sand bid for the winter 2022-23. We bid $27 per yard for three-quarter inch winter sand delivered to town yard and mixed with town supplied salt and piled in the shed. This is for 14 cubic loads delivered at the request of the supervisor. Um, I didn't, I didn't, you know what, I didn't pull those numbers, Stan, did you, let me make a motion to approve it, then we'll put it into discussion. Okay? I'd like to make a motion to approve the sand bid from A.S. Clark, 2022-23 winter, for $27 per yard for 34-inch winter sand delivered. May I have a second?
Second.
I think you got it first, Bruce, uh, we seconded by Bruce Mello. Now we go for discussion, Bruce, your question was, how does it compare to last year? I did not look it up, did you look it up? I did not look it up. Stan has the whole pile, he's good.
Let's see.
If the bid is in the sponsor, I can go look for it.
It's supposed to, I mean, we should know how much difference the cycle of plowing.
Sorry, who seconded?
Bruce.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I like your file, I mean, yeah, just good to see that.
Yeah. Winter materials shows up as $22,954.70, and it was budgeted for 21, so it's 22, almost 23.
So that's, that's how much we ended up paying for our sand last year.
And it says winter maturing, so I'm assuming
That's the same.
That's the same.
So, you want to listen now?
Here we have winter sand bid for last year. The price for winter sand bid for 2021-22 was $23 per yard.
So it's less than?
It's $27 per yard.
Okay, thanks for the note.
And the previous year, 2022, was $21 per year, per yard.
So it's kind of $2 to $4 a year.
And the, uh, price of the uh, plowing was $33,200 for 2020-2021.
How much was that, 33?
It was 33,200.
But that was a bid the year before, because that was
This was for
The second year.
2019, um, 2021, 2022.
Okay, that was for this past year.
But that's the second year of the, they, they did it once.
I believe so, we, we only did one year of bid this year.
And how many yards we done, how many yards have we bumped it up? 14 cubic yards per load?
Per load.
And how many loads did we have?
It, it's, uh, depends on the season, I'm not sure what the average is because some years big one.
And that was $23 a yard. That's 1,443 yards. So at 27. Gonna turn out to be about $38,961.
For, for sand?
Yeah.
Wow.
I'm not sure. Well, we won't know.
Sand and plow.
I don't have current budget numbers, so I can't I know we increased it some.
Right. Right, any other discussion? Oh, what, what Mark has?
Okay. My budget is 33 for highway salaries, so it's $7,000 over that. We had budgeted 21,000 for winter materials, and then we roughly $18,000 over on that.
So that, so you're saying that the sand bid is that, like, is gonna cost us to be over budgeted? And we'll have to be
Over budget, it's not over budgeting, sorry.
Till we, till we sand it.
Well, what I'm saying is we haven't set up for next year, or what are we at?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yes, we are, I forgot what month that was.
Thank you.
So what happens over?
Well, we could go, if, if it's used at the same rate as last year, we could be as much, as close as $18,000 over what we anticipated for the winter material.
That's a shot.
Yeah.
That's a shot.
It is our own bid.
Yeah, we already knew where that's at.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the sand bid for the winter 2022-23 from A.S. Clark &amp; Sons in, for $27 per yard, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, it's, it's a tough, tough thing. You know, when we do our budgeting, this is the, the details that we really pull out of our, our files.
Yep. We're gonna make this up this year, that's the only thing. We'll see.
Well, it's not gonna snow this year, you know.
Because I, I only crossed the times, right? Like, that's not a bad, I only crossed the times. The year before was fine.
Yeah. All right, the third, uh, RFP to open up is the electrical work for the air-to-air heat pumps installed. Uh, installed, and we received one bid, one bid came from Larson Electric, which, um, and the cost of that, he hasn't, it broken down into two parts. Um, for each of the six units, the rate would be $1,180 for a total of $7,080 on the CI end, and then $140 per six unit for a total of $840. I'm not sure what the WE is, that's, that's
Uh, I believe what he's talking about there is, yes, that, he has to make it so that he totally, it's a decision, that that might not be additionally charged, because it's plug-in, he has to, there has to be an electric plug-in within 25 feet of each unit.
Okay, but this, that's not, it's not
That's the second one.
Is it, is that the second one?
Yeah.
It says that all materials and labor is provided in a quote of GFCI.
That's right, I'm sorry, it's a
Okay, must be installed with no receptacles present within 25 feet of that given heat pump. So my question is, is that in addition to the $7,920?
No, that's, that's just part of the idea.
That's the $140, if it's not?
It's not there, it'll be less than the same amount.
Okay.
It's way explained, it was
My guess is he's going to have to install.
Pass this around, take a look at it.
There is, I know one, probably two, electric outlets that he could tap into on the outside, but there are none in the north end, none in the gym side, and none in the south end. But I know there's one near the, it says literally 25 feet, I know there's one near the entranceway, and I'm most pos- positive there's one, well, that's side of the entranceway, if it's true.
So we might only have to do four out of the six that he's bid for, so that
But I haven't checked it myself.
Does he agree with that?
Yes, okay, yeah, that's what he's talking about, I think.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid from Larson Electric in the amount of
A few thousand.
$7,080.
$7,000.
And up to $840 additional, for a total of $7,920. But the full job is something that he goes, is required to go six, front or second.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the bid from Larson Electric for the installation of the necessary tower for the air-to-air heat exchangers at the daycare building, not to exceed $7,920, including GFI installation.
GFCI.
GFCI if necessary at the six sites. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mello, any additional comments?
Yes.
Mr. Mello?
I'm wait, I'm awaiting, and it's getting close, from Green Mountain Power, Dan Mackey, after Tim Hart, the puppet staller, gave me the information that we might be available for additional money for, for this project. My last communication was with Dan Mackey, and he referenced a picture of the beast, the oilers in the basin, and a picture of the tags when the, when the oilers were serviced, because he wanted to see what the picture was. So screwed it over there to, to Susie's, took the picture, sent it back, and we got it. Now I'm waiting to see how much money we get out of it. Initially, he said to me, he thought up to $7,000. But I don't know if it's gonna be $100 or $10,000. So I, I just wanted you all to know, it's in the works, it's getting really close, and it appears that we're gonna get the money, but I don't think it should be, I'm just telling you that for that reason, that could help our finance, and, you know, um, our financial capabilities are paying it off.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the bid from Larson Electric for the installation of the electrical power necessary to run the six air-to-air cold climate heat exchangers, not to exceed $7,920, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the motion passes, the RFP accepted.
I'm a little behind you on the proposal, I mean, on the motion. Proposal from Larson Electric for electrical work.
Necessary to install the air-to-air cold climate heat pumps. It's the electrical
No, just say opposed.
That, the
Yes.
It's the electrical needed to install the heat pumps at the daycare building.
At the which building?
At the daycare.
Susie's old penis.
Thank you, Peter.
Not to exceed 7920.
7920, not to exceed 7920.
Seconded by Mr. Mello, on the motion, all in favor?
That's correct.
We're good.
All right, good, thank you very much.
I'm speaking like always.
Okay, accepted, accepted, uh, any other new business, nobody else? Okay, the next item in all business, look, we're right on, oh, we're right on time, uh, all business. ARBA, the Select Board Discussion Regarding Offer Appropriations Already Made and Anticipated Appropriations to Be Discussed. On September 7th, 2022, at the next regular meeting, it will be opened up to the public to join in with their ideas, via Zoom or in person. Today, we scheduled 30 minutes for the three of us to discuss our, our interests and concerns. Um, and how would you like to proceed, do you want, somebody wants to go first?
Susie's thinking, ideas, you having ideas? I have my pile, and I'm gonna rip right through it, hopefully with everybody understanding, and, uh, can ask questions, as I
All right, you, so would you like to begin then?
I'd like to be last.
Is that all right, Bruce?
I'd like to be last.
You'd like to be last, okay.
I'd like to hear what everybody else's, kind of, minds, and, because I have done a lot, and, um, I try to coordinate with that.
All right, or, um, Stan, how do you, what, what would you like to discuss on this?
Uh, I'm trying to be flexible on my approach to this.
It's a good start.
And, uh, so it, it, it may uh, include, uh, providing our match, the town of Brookline's match, to the sand and salt shed, which might be $75,000 to $85,000 roughly. It's an approximate number, we're, uh, Peter, $75,000 to $85,000 anticipated match for the sand and salt shed. Uh, so that's, that's one thing, and that involves discussing the merits of the sand and salt shed project. Uh, at the appropriate time in the meeting, I will update the other members of the board feedback that I got from Wyndham Regional Commission, as well as Christopher Hunt of V Trans regarding that project, and their attitudes regarding certain uh, events that the town may implore. Uh, the other things I think, uh, that would be of interest to me is, uh, revealing the pay rates for the town clerk and the two assistant, uh, treasurers. One of whom will most likely be our treasurer as of the next town meeting. Uh, and, uh, I think that's, you know, I, I would have, would have had the opportunity, it were the past months, to ask any of the businesses in town if they had any difficulties that they experienced, and consider some kind of remuneration or lessening of their burdens. Uh, I know we don't have many, but we do have a few. Uh, and certainly we wish to, uh, you know, stimulate local economy. And then, uh, let's see. And that's pretty much it for me. I will say that as a part of preparation for this meeting, I've gone back and looked at what we have spent for certain buildings in the community. And one of them, of course, is Sunny Lane, uh, the Suzie Little Peanuts. We, uh, spent a total last year on that structure of $28,316.86 in fiscal year 2022. And, uh, that's $8,314.52 more than was collected and ranked on that, uh, building, if the figures here are accurate and I handled them correctly. Uh, we have about to spend in the next 30 days or so, uh, conceivably another $42,000. And it just seems that, you know, we're looking at what appears to be a $60,000 expenditure in a matter of 14 months, and I, I think, I, I am not in favor at this point of increasing any more expenses for the next And I, I think, I, I am not in favor at this point of increasing any more expenses for the next twelve to twenty-four months. Because I, I would, uh, feel that it's about time that these residents of Brookline benefit from having that income property. Uh, when I looked at a couple, few meetings ago, I did a rough calculation. And on that building today, from its inception of rental, we had approximately one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in income. And it looks like we're gonna add to that, that forty-two thousand dollars anyway. So we're close to two hundred thousand dollars in expenses, some of which apparently we've already proved from ARPA. And, and again, I'm feeling that, uh, there needs to be a pause to allow, uh, I think, the citizens to reap some benefits. I've gone to social functions in this town, and every time I do, I get a question of when are the citizens gonna get a tax break? And that's a hard question to answer, because I'm, I'm a part of a team, and I'm not attracting attention to any particular item, except for now. That there is a way, I think, that we ought to stop and pause and consider, uh, utilizing the, I think, the, what was the intended use of rental income? Which is to defray other municipal expenditures. And tha- and that's the sum of my ARPA presentation.
Okay, um, my research with, thank you, Stan.
Yep, thank you, Stan.
My, my research with looking at some of the things that we can set, spend, uh, ARPA money on or where our finances are at this time, um. Yes, we have moved some ARPA money, twenty-seven thousand dollars into highway salaries, and we, uh, who I can't give the number.
Where's the thirty?
Thirty-four thousand, I think, into, from ARPA for the, the cold air, uh, heat pumps.
But we had.
Um.
We, we agreed to twenty-nine ninety-five, all plus the, plus the forty-five hundred, but we, we haven't been able to remember correctly, I think, seventeen.
We, we, we accepted a bid, we pulled the number out, because.
Mm-hmm, thirty-four, um.
Thirty-four thousand dollars, yes, so we accepted a, a bid of thirty-four, uh, up to, but not exceeding four, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. In anticipation of some rebates, but we don't know that at this time, um, of the ARPA money. So those were the two expenditures, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty, and twenty-seven thousand dollars. As far as finding other monies in our accounts, I just wanted to remind the Select Board that about nine, it could be ten years this year ago. The town of Brookline had an interesting situation. They applied for and received a one hundred thousand dollar municipal bond grant to repair the bridge at the, or intersection of Grassy Brook Road and Putney Mountain Road. At almost the same time, additional monies became available from the state of Vermont through grants, which actually was accepted. And it covered the costs of that bridge work. However, there was no, there was no ability for the town of Brookline to return the one hundred thousand dollar municipal bond grant to the originators, because it was sold and people rely on the interest from those bond grants, those developers. So we held that money in account, and every year we pay ten thousand and some odd change back to the municipal bond grant. When I met with our treasurer, Melissa Brown, the other day, she said that this is the year that that grant should be all paid off. So it's not, we have one more year?
No, you're talking about the, the.
Hundred thousand dollars.
No, we, we, we have nine years left.
No.
Wow.
We did this nine.
According to the schedule, it's out there in the file, it's a twenty-year program.
It's a, not, it's a ten.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, why would we pay back two hundred thousand dollars on, it's a ten-year program.
The ultimate cost, because of whatever reason, I think was a hundred and twelve thousand. And somehow we ended up.
That was the amount that the town of Brookline got?
Uh, I saw in a file somewhere that the, the bridge cost was significantly less than anticipated. I think the original borrowing or bond was two hundred thousand dollars. And then the, the town ended up spending somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars, unless we ended up with a outstanding balance of a hundred thousand dollars. And when you look at the payment schedule, it's, uh, I believe, I think it's a twenty-year payment schedule. Which is why prior treasurers have been carrying it as a hundred. And we had a discussion when we were doing, I think, the budget, and I asked a guy who was acting as treasurer at the time, does this mean that the outstanding balance now is actually ninety thousand dollars? And, and in addition to that, yes, I understand that it's four or five years ago when Somar was treasurer. We had asked her if we could pay it off early, and she did do the inquiry, and she found out that we were gonna be charged a significant penalty because it was being taken out of that.
I remember that.
And there's a, a significant expense apparently in replacing it with something of similar remaining terms, similar rate, et cetera, et cetera. And she indicated that it would be to our benefit just to bear with it, pay the interest costs, and not have it cost the town a significant amount of money afterwards. So the fact that it should be paid off by now, uh, I, I don't know what to make of that. Either I'm totally off the mark, or, or there's an error somewhere else, I'm misunderstanding.
Because, because what we do in our budget is we appropriate money annually into our budget to cover the, the payment schedule. And so that cash that's sitting in there for roads and bridges will become unrestricted.
I see.
And I believe we were in the, finished up the ninth out of a ten-year loan at ten thousand each.
I never remembered the nine years I've had on the board, I think about two hundred thousand dollars.
I never heard two hundred thousand either, I think it was the three thousand.
I always heard five thousand. So I don't, I'm not really sure.
I, I don't know, it, that's, I couldn't have a completely misunderstanding.
You'll clear it up, right?
All right, well.
That's okay, I mean.
Because we, I questioned that this past, this past December. And, uh, and, and it, the response I got tried with my mis, with my understanding. I may be all wrong, and so I'd be interested in hearing the finish of what you got. Because if it's over and done, I, I noticed on the balance sheet, that one hundred thousand dollars is being carried. And I'm not, not sure, and I, and maybe one of you are, as to whether that's, uh, look at it as a liability? Or whether in fact it's an asset?
It's a, it's an asset.
Yes.
It's a, it's, it's the money that we did not spend that we, it's been sitting there.
It's been sitting there.
In fact, at some point, the, and if you recall, one of the concerns when Guy was treasurer was that the highway fund was down to some twenty thousand dollars due to all the FEMA expenses that were unexpected. And so one of the things that you did to ensure that we were financially responsible for the payment of our road supervisor, we transferred money from the ARPA into that fund in order to account for that. At some point, and I was looking at it with the treasurer, it went down to fifteen thousand dollars. But actually, she pointed out, we always had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It is in the money market, there is a one hundred thousand dollar cash asset that is in the money market, that she is carrying it down. And she was the one that said that that should be paid this year, but I will double check on it. Anyway, I was just looking at additional assets that if we needed to fund the salt sand shed deposit, that would be the ideal place to pick it from, because we've been budgeting and collecting taxes to cover that. So that cash would be, be released for, for use in any, any budget, any way we wish to use it, she felt. But I do think that does need to be followed a little bit more. The second item that I thought of when I was doing my ARPA, uh, uh, planning was that one of the things that we first started out with was that the town of Brookline is underserved with, uh, communications, broadband, internet, cellular communications. I know there's many areas in town that a cell phone won't work, um, and with, uh, DV fiber, we have a representative on their board, it's Stan Demain, and, uh, Dr. Stephen John, um, past superintendent of, of the, uh, school system, is managing the, um, DV fiber plans, uh, program. And they just got a twenty-four million dollar grant from the government, and they have started some infrastructure programs. I don't want to forget that at some point, and I know I would like to invite Stephen John on the September seventh meeting, I don't wanna forget, uh, supplying money towards that need so that we have better communication coverage here in the town of Brookline, which is something that, you know, we felt initially, when this first came about, when we joined the DV, the, the European Valley Fiber System, that we thought it was important to have a representative and to, uh, sign on to that. And I still just wanted to remind the, the board of, of that.
Okay.
Um, but then I also, I understand where you were coming at with spending an additional ARPA money on the school building itself, but finding other ways to, to, uh, enhance the town's, enhance the town. But tho- those are my concerns, that, that, the, that hundred thousand dollars that we, that we've never really talked about, much about, and that we still need to commit to, uh, communications and broadband, uh, infrastructure in town. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
I guess the thing that's puzzling to me is if it's down, if that bond has essentially a zero balance or ten thousand dollars. You know, I don't understand why in that page for Highway Fund Two, it's showing up as a, uh, bond R B B balance of a hundred thousand dollars.
She carries the cash asset, because we never spent it on the road.
That's right, I agree.
Could, because the grants, Vermont state grants, covered that bridge remodeling, and it was just fate that they had gone through all the municipal bond thing, and then the state came through and, and trumped it.
And we could.
So does that mean in the fund balance of assets above, a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirteen cents? Is a hundred thousand dollars of that bond money?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess I probably need to meet with her, maybe others can accompany me, to find out what the forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars is in the fund balance column, and the, the eight hundred dollars for the town shed, I know that's money that was set aside for the eight hundred dollars.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Eight thou- yeah, eight thousand, I see.
And I told Melissa, I said, this Select Board voted to roll that money, the eight thousand dollars, into the salt sand shed plan for, because that was, we were not putting that floor in that, in the building, it was done during, um.
It says in the, uh, in here, in the budget, restricted town shed.
It, but it was, should have been updated before I, it should have been updated in two thou- two thousand seventeen or eighteen. We took that money in a board meeting and we approved the, moving it, because we, because when we signed the contract for doing the salt sand shed, we said this should go towards.
Right, we changed it.
We changed it.
Because as Jimmy Rogers initially did.
That's right, Wes, I'm correct.
Right.
And it was, I believe it was for the floor, I think. Wasn't it, wasn't the concrete floor, or something, or whatever, or anything like that?
Yeah.
And we moved it, we changed it, you probably have to, have to tell me.
I was saying, you know, while that was being discussed, I don't have a problem with her keeping it in a separate fund, so it's kept track of, rather than transferring it to a general fund, so that it doesn't get touched, which was what it was originally for. It's in the highway fund, in, in, you know, number two.
Right. Right.
So I don't know if there's a, I'm not sure there is a benefit to rolling it over into some other category, but what would you roll it over into?
The salt sand shed building.
Or something like that, right.
It, it would, it would pay for some of the salt sand shed costs.
We don't, I guess we don't have an asset.
Re- 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 expression costs.
We don't have an asset fund as a town sandsaw.
But it says on the, on that page, restricted town shed, there's only one town shed or two town sheds.
Yes. Yes, but there is no other money that's set aside, especially in that category, as I understand it. It's in and there, it's by itself.
Right, we have never set aside a budget in that sandso.
And we've not been able to change it that sandso.
We have not been fulfilling our, our, uh, responsibility of, of annually putting money aside for the deposit, for our match.
Right.
Right, so I'm saying that that, we decided to use that as, but this is again.
And, and she wasn't even here then, so right easily that it's been not handled if that was voted at some point in the past, as that vote occurred. So, but again, uh, it, it, to me, it's, it's not a major issue in and of itself.
Right.
Uh, so I just mentioned that, uh.
So that was my, my ARPA thing, would be the DV fiber and also taking a look at that one hundred thousand dollars that is not ARPA. This way, ARPA can be used and you can leverage it to the best of our ability. And I do think that there will be people in the community that will find that maybe they can help us. Because I know some communities, towns actually have a budget committee, which consists of Select Board members and, and financially astute residents who like to sit down and crunch numbers. And that's nothing, we sit here every year for months.
Fighting it out. Fighting it out.
Fighting it out and going over it, but we forget things, and we're finding this year that we're forgetting things in our budgeting. So as far as ARPA, what we wanna do is the right way, we wanna make it, make the most out of the money and, and use what we have efficiently. And I think that this is just a, a, a signal that there, there's much to be learned and to be done in order to, to improve how we, how we work in town. But I do think that having the ARPA money is, is, to, to continue to benefit us in many different ways. And I know, Stan, that you were doing some research or, or putting information down about grants, and you did a really nice spreadsheet on it. I do happen to have the initial grant information, I'd be glad to share with you in this folder at a later time, um, when we first got the ARPA money, because I did the paperwork on that. Okay, so.
So was that ARPA paperwork or all of that?
ARPA, it's, it's this, it's, it's.
Sorry, I don't know the answers to this one, but I'm learning.
It's the, um, um.
Siri every time.
It's the Parker Rescue Plan, uh, initials of war to the town of Brookline.
Yeah, I, I've got that paperwork.
Oh, you do, you got it all on computer. Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, and so I had to say, Bruce, you, you think we're waiting for it patiently?
That's rare.
I know.
First off, I wanna say, uh, with what Stan was saying before, there's a lot of agree of what, what, what you were saying. I don't agree with everything, but I'll hit some points. The first thing is you mentioned the amount of money that we had spent over the amount of money that we had gotten for the lease, but we were never in the hole in the last year. So I don't know where that comes from, but anyway, that's something to be disputed, uh, we'll go with that. Uh, and, and another thing is, uh, everybody's gotta be reminded that we spent twenty-two to twenty-three years, Select Boards, that never touched that building. That's the second thing. The third thing is, the way I understand, um, returning money to, as far as ARPA funds, to the community can't be done in terms of a tax remediation, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
I don't think, I think that's what he's saying, he's not asking you to give ARPA money back to the.
Other way. Taxes, nothing. Okay, no.
He's not asking you to give ARPA money back, it's actually being, no.
Right, I'm just. Okay, I've come up with a lot of things, it's been on the phone, talking to people, meeting with people, um, wonderful, uh, uh.
And I have to say this, remember, he, Peter's taking notes and he has to understand this, so.
Oh. Oh, he's not typing it in?
I mean, he's typing it with.
Oh, like, slow, slower, okay.
A little slower, a little louder.
Okay, hear me, Peter?
Yeah, be a little clearer, that's all.
Okay, which means, oh, slow, okay. The first thing I found out was we've been discussing, in discussion, about getting a wheel excavator. So I spent a fair amount of time talking to Chris from Alta, and I have found out numbers, et cetera. And basically, not to get into too below by ball, just hit the high points. The two, the, the equipment that, uh, uh, that Mark would need, based on the equipment that is there now that he has, other than a bush hog, because he didn't really give me a price for a bush hog, was about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, yes. And the next price up one was a hundred and sixty-six thousand. The difference between the two is the one that he has now is a twenty-seventeen with a little over two thousand hours on it. And the one that, that is not present, that's, that is, is a twenty-twenty with five hundred and thirty-one hours on it. And that one's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars plus attachments. So that would bring it up to about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars plus a bush hog, which he couldn't really give me an answer on as far as, uh, he didn't, he had to look into it. Okay, saying that, I asked. Okay, saying that, I asked him, if we were to purchase a rental, uh, lease with option to buy, um. He expressed that seventy percent of our rental would go towards, would go towards the purchase price. Any questions up there on, on the left? Okay.
Peter, this is our.
This, eight. Okay, I'm moving over now. I also found out that any kind of a loan payment didn't seem to need, didn't seem to need a down payment.
If we're going through the one for the state, that's two percent rate, that's two percent.
Okay.
Any other entity is anywhere from three to five percent.
Yeah, he was five, five, five and a half percent, I believe is what he had. But I'm talking about the down payment and my, my thrust here is to keep looking at this ARPA money. People in the D R money. And I've seen that the loan payment could be made realistically out of the road fund. Given that we have forty, bear with me a second, I got it written here someplace, forty-six thousand? Bear with me a second. Yes, we have forty-three thousand dollars in our summer contract service equipment fund. Forty-three thousand bucks, according to this as of July, that doesn't include anything in August. What, what's been happening now was eleven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, basically twenty-six point nine percent of the budget for the coming years.
Twenty-six point nine percent of the current budget is for contracting services, that means to hire outside contractors.
Correct.
Okay.
Based on what he gave me for numbers, we're looking at a two to twenty-two, twenty-three, depending on what we do, how much we spend. And how long of a term was in the twos, thousands a month to pay that wheel excavator off. Again, it depends on if we've got a new one, which is a hundred and ninety thousand, I think, the hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar one. Or the one that, that Mark's using right now, that's about a hundred and nineteen thousand. Any questions up there? No, okay, so what I thought was, and that all of this is consideration. Throwing it out there for everybody to, to understand what I'm thinking and looking at and to discuss and look for, always looking for the better option. Um, we, I don't believe in this particular instance, because of the, and Mark answered this better, how much money, okay, let me put it this way. If we're using two thousand dollars a month for the next, or two months in, till next June, ten months. And we're talking twenty thousand dollars and we've used. We've used eleven so far, that's thirty-three, two thirty-two, thirty-three thousand roughly. That's still under ten thousand left. We have to determine whether we could take the payment out of that road fund. I know that was, where I got that idea was guy initially had that idea four or five years ago and initially, you know, the idea of getting a wheel excavator because he felt that. And rightly so, I think, that we are spending so much out of these doors to out purchase, uh, service and equipment, summer contract service and equipment. That'd be realistic from that standpoint, have all, all our equipment because, to own our equipment because over a period of time, five years, six years, whenever it was, we own the equipment. And that would eliminate that from the budget. Now, my question, I need to ask Mark a question. Do you know of anything else according, according to the next ten months? Other than what you're doing right now that's a kind of a major expense on the, uh, on the summer contract services? Or my, or my, or my corner?
Um, I, I can add something right now. We have to pay for a basing brother paving that build, just, they just did, that was sixty-seven thousand.
Sixty-four thousand.
And.
Is that retreatment though or that's a separate?
Oh, that's a separate, that's retreatment?
That's not summer, that's not summer services.
Okay, I take it back, so that's its own category and the other paving is its own category. Okay, 'cause when you were just talking about that, okay, I'm.
See, what I'm, that's okay, that's why, Mark, anything?
Sure, defenses, uh, we're hoping female will pay for a lot of what needs to be done repairs. So, um, we're in the new fiscal year. Uh, I haven't ordered new coverts yet because we still had an inventory left from last fiscal year. Um, we generally have been doing, uh, track sealing. Which was around three thousand dollars for a mile. That's something we can. Um.
That's always.
Been a new pavement, I'm not sure if you wanna have lines painted on it.
Yeah, was that a part of the summer services?
That can come out of contract.
Okay. That's all right, I, I, I apologize because my intention wasn't according.
There might be some free work that needs.
Okay, okay, but basically, we can get a chunk of that loan payment out of that fund. And do pretty well with that. I don't know if it'd be the entire payment, but a lot of it. And with my intention of kind of ease on the ARPA, ease on the ARPA, that's always what I look at. Uh, now I'm gonna run down, thanks Mark, now I'm gonna run down some stuff, but I got no question for you in a second here. On stuff that I don't think ARPA should touch. But first, one thing I think that we should touch is Mark and I had a good long conversation the other day for about forty-five minutes, discussing several things. Part of it was the lawn excavator, I mean, it was the excavator, part of it was tools for Mark. Part of it was the impossible consideration of the pickup truck. Part of it was, uh, the, um, the excavator itself and the, and the, and the components of it and the equipment that's on it. And we had quite the discussion, but, uh, I don't know if you, if I asked you if you could, because you haven't been busy doing anything, I doubt that. Uh, to come up with a list of what you thought you needed for equipment to help you, not any pickup truck, but we, you know what I'm talking about. Other than the chainsaws and stuff that you have.
Well, after that talk, I. The thought of the town owning a, a vehicle. To be able for me to operate, to check roads and do my thing where it would be. Uh, a nice feature, it has.
I was gonna bring that up, but I don't want, probably at this point, Mark, just remember we talked about tools to need, like oil pressure washer and something like that.
All right, yeah, whenever we have rented something in the past, um. Usually when you're done renting, you fuel it back to the full mark, all the oil capacity is full.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you clean it out, um, and generally, most people power wash and send it back in the condition they got it. And unfortunately, we have no water source, uh, no power washer.
We have no water down there.
No, my, my thought was a gas powered pull start motor power washer.
He's got an idea.
And I could take a garden hose and drop down to the brook in, uh. Is it, in the parking lot?
So my discussion with Mark was to get out of, I'm saying this for him, get out of him. What he needs, other than the equipment he already has, and of course, he brought up the truck, but I'm not talking about the truck right this minute. I'm talking about hand tools, um, chainsaws, which he already has, he's mentioned the, um, um. Uh, power washer, but I was gonna suggest as a part of the ARPA funds. We should give Mark a thousand, a couple thousand, whatever he feels would cover it to, to take care of that. Immediately, as soon as, as soon as realistic.
I supply all the power tools and air compressor and shovels and saws and tools. So, you know, anything that would come along at any given time would be very appreciated, but.
Okay.
Um, that stuff should be.
The stuff is all your personal.
That's correct, I agree the whole part of it. And that's what was going on with Mr. Bills, is, Mark, you gotta.
I, I touch us, yeah, yeah, no, there's a, there's a, a started list.
Good.
Um, you know, another thing that would be very helpful item would be a hay chopper.
A what?
A hay chopper and maybe we can wait and get one with a grant, same way we got the, uh.
Okay.
What you call the hopper?
The leaf blower, a hay chopper.
Oh, a hay chopper, oh, for mulching the.
Your toy. Yeah, yeah, anytime we expose, uh, areas that needs to get seeded and haved and that, that cuts the job in half. Uh, being able to, um, use a hay chopper. So that may become available through a grant, maybe, uh, because I recall that was.
That was one of the grant things.
So maybe we can keep an eye on that and look forward to. So another savings on a grant purchase, um. Yeah, and then.
But the stuff specific to what we can, what we can buy for you that you need. Let's put it that way, I can't get much flatter than that.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I carry, my pickup's full of tools at any given day. Two hundred and sixty-five days a year, I have enough tools to rebuild a, an older, you know, day.
I got my first.
And grease, grease guns and, uh, I mean.
But what if you.
Those are all personal pieces of your land.
That's right.
Right, so and I use them for the town and, you know, it gets the job done and gets to do the day.
I would, I would, I guess I feel like, well, Bruce does, that, that should be, and apparently as well, based on your comment. That should be stuff that we should be providing.
Yeah, I don't expect it all to come at once, but if there's any.
Well, we're probably not talking thirty thousand dollars, right?
No, no.
Right, so it's, it's due in a sec.
Yeah.
Don't be bashful.
Quite enough.
Yeah.
This is the problem. I saw you out there five, at least five times in one step. We're gonna, we're, I could come up with some nice choice curse words for that mulcher and so on, I really could, but I won't, I'll show. Little stretchy part, so you're gonna have to use that now on my head. Uh, but my point being is, you were working, you were working your fanny off on that thing. Now watch me, you didn't see me. I watched you several times and you're, he's kicking down, I mean, he was really working his butt off. But it seems to me that you should have the proper equipment, that you can do the equipment reasonably well without having to kill yourself. And the fact that we got that, that's a little off topic of hair, but the fact that we got that mulcher mower and we place it on a regular mower. Made it harder for you. So if we had the equipment that you needed onsite, on, on spot. Mr. Myers sent me an email and said, oh, we should partner, and I sent him an email back saying, well, that's all well and good. But not for a wheel excavator, because we need to have that item sitting on the spot in case we have an emergency situation. And we can't be at the whim of another, another, another town if, uh, if something were to happen. But in reference to the equipment, if you have equipment that you know you, that you're using, that you're familiar with, that's in good shape. That is where I want, because this whole business of dust just adding, a greater, and I know I'm going off, I don't wanna stop.
Yeah, 'cause you got other things to do.
I know, the greater, the greater, and that's our, that's our piece of equipment for the town, it's ridiculous. But Peter Myers said one pointed thing, I'm not sure where he said, we don't have a road crew. No, we're the only town in, in this valley, I believe it doesn't have a road crew. And you don't have help. So least we can do, the least we can do is get you good quality equipment that you don't have to fight with.
So you're suggesting that we set aside a certain amount of money from the ARPA to provide additional tools and such. Do you have an amount for that?
No, well, that's.
That's something to work with.
Yeah, that was, I talked to Mark last Friday and he's been doing nothing for the last week. So, so he needs to, he needs to, he told me about the pressure washer and maybe a couple of other things, but. He needs to digest it a little bit and show our, if we agree, on our intent that way. But I see that that is exceptional use of ARPA money to help our road, our, our road crew.
All right, anything else? I am gonna try and move aside a little bit.
Okay, okay, the things I don't wanna see with the ARPA. The electric hookup for the heat, for the hot pumps, for the heat pumps, that comes out, everything comes out of Suzie's things. And if I'm going too fast, tell me. Replace the lighting, any lighting in Suzie's little penis with LEDs. A hybrid water, hot water heater. Loan payments if, if we go forward and, and the agreement that, if we can do the panels for that building. And that should be really the exp- uh, loan payment for the panels. And the CPG that we have to get, certificate of public good in order to get panels on that building and. Any expenses from Green Mountain Power, which is probably a grant, all should come out of Suzie's fund. Loan payment, the only.
So it's really not ARPA?
No, so let's just do the ARPA.
No, I'm just wanting to run through that list really quickly, so everybody understands what I said. With respect to insulation, that I think has to be set aside, not included in ARPA money. Because there's a lot of avenues that we can get money for that. And it's wide open right now, especially in light of the, um, uh, the bill that was signed yesterday, the Inflation Reduction Act. Which I'm trying to, still trying to find, understand what's going on with that as far as what's available for the, for the towns. And Mark brought it up, I'll mention again, we can consider doing a pickup truck. But I, I'm personally not in favor of selling ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars out of ARPA. Maybe a down payment financing? We'll see, you know, it's open, I think. Or, you know, maybe, maybe I, I can't, I have your road fund too, but I don't see where that could be a part of taking money out of road fund to do that. So that would, any down payment or something like that towards, towards a pickup truck. Um, should come from that and then we have to crunch numbers as far as.
You're saying it should come from an ARPA, your suggestion, okay.
Just, just as I.
The down payment.
Down payment.
Correct, okay, now, I just wanna state one thing. The bill that was signed yesterday, the Inflation Reduction Act. Was to reduce carbon, the carbon footprint, carbon footprint by forty percent. Joe, God bless Joe, why the fifty percent? If we could do what I think, we could, we could actually have less of, more than ninety to a hundred percent in that vicinity. Because if we were to follow through.
Of what project?
I'm talking about the entire town, I'm talking about the entire town buildings. Judy was great, she sent me the Green Mountain Power bills for every building that we own. Other, other, other than Suzie's little penis, which is a separate entity, which I already know about.
You're talking the energy cost, whether it be fuel, propane.
Yep, we just got seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it's electric.
Yep, and basically, we could, and put enough panels on this grass over here. To cover our electric needs and heat and air conditioning needs for this building. And for the, any other electric needs for the other buildings.
How will ARPA money cover that? That's another hu- that's a huge project.
Just for them, just for them, it's not a huge project. It's not a huge project at all. It's not, it might be a huge expense, but just one second, it might be a huge expense, but it doesn't mean all that money's coming out of ARPA money. Then I'll give an example, what just happened with the heat pumps. We just got a credible amount of money off that heat pumps. If the seven thousand dollars holds true, based on thirty-nine thousand dollars. We got thirteen of them back.
Nine.
Seven, excuse me, my addition's wrong, seven and forty-five hundred is eleven five of them back. So sure, this has to be determined. Again, I'm just proposing consideration and for us to look at.
So you're proposing possibly reducing the town's total cost of energy. Uh, reducing the carbon footprint by looking at utilizing some ARPA money where best placed. And that does go along with the town plan, our town plan, which I didn't bring, does have a lot of solar in it.
You said reduce. If this was done correctly, it would eliminate. We wouldn't have an electric bill, we wouldn't have an oil bill. So that oil bill was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand we were spending this year at, let's be conservative. Let's say it's three dollars a pound, twenty-one, twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And we know it's on three dollars a pound. So what I'm getting at is every time we do something like this, we're taking something that, taking. Uh, cost out of expenditure of our budget and transferring it. Sooner or later, when we own those items, that's fine. Okay, any questions?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that when we get into the details like this, that maybe we gotta have a work meeting.
Okay.
And have this kind of meeting for the, the summer stuff.
Sounds good, all, then I'll just highlight my points going forward and then we can go that approach.
Okay.
I'm also looking at, at the church budget for, for ARPA money and I'm under the, uh, uh, under the feeling. I'm also looking at at the church budget for for Arba money and I'm under the, uh under the feeling. That we should uh keep their budget around fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars so they have money for a for a grant. Because they've just got two people on on their, on their, on their committee that wanna go crazy and get grants, love them. Love that, that's beautiful.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're saying, you're saying to provide them with enough money so that they have matching funds through.
Well, they already have twenty-three thousand in there now, but they haven't paid for the paint.
So I'm not sure what you're saying.
What I'm saying is I'd like to take any, I would like to make sure that the balance on their budget stays fifteen to sixteen thousand. And not go below that, so if it goes to thirteen, we throw in a couple of grand on the Arba one towards that one, just to keep that built up.
That's fifteen to sixteen in expenditures every year that you wanna provide money for.
No.
No, you're saying fifteen to sixteen to add to their available balance?
No, well, I'm sorry, maybe I'm going to, I'll try to be clear, they have twenty-three thousand dollars in that amount. I don't want it to go below fifteen to sixteen, but in their expenditures, if they have to spend, to pay the expense, they're in rent. If they go below that figure, I would like to take some Arba money, a thousand, to to keep that fund built up. Because they're gonna need that matching.
So you're looking at maybe a contrib- you're looking at transferring money from Arba to the building, the complaint meeting us at some point. Okay, to make in amounts of fifteen to sixteen.
Right, I'm not talking about five, ten, fifteen, I'm talking about a couple of grand, just to keep it at that level. Because knowing what I know about about matching, everybody's matching grants, they're not gonna be a hundred percent of that. So when they go for grants, they're gonna need matching money and if they go lower than ten grand, it's gonna be an issue.
Alright, next.
Okay, uh I'm gonna break that up to tell you. But there's a lot of, a lot of this Arba money and we could talk about, like you said, in a workday, um Stan, that. A chunk of this money I would love to see go into the church, I think the town would like it, but there's one very big problem with painting. And that's the mold removal and I won't get into it because you'll get all upset, but basically Jan Lewandowski hit the nail right on the head. I have it right here for my reading after meeting, but basically saying, we have to be careful before we paint the inside of that building. Until we remedi- remediate the mold, but that's all.
They haven't even brought that up.
Oh, I, uh anyway, so that's it for for the church for now, you were kind enough to send me that thing about the BDCC. Uh yesterday, Stan?
Yeah.
And I, I was off the phone about ten minutes and got on the phone to them and I, this real day, I have like twenty extensions. And I've just picked anybody and laid his kind, she's like, I think it's from my person, took my contact information down. I haven't heard that back yet, but that's seems to me as though it's a hundred percent coverage of a solar panel project. That helps with that stubble payment we were talking about the last week. So I'm trying, I'm trying to work on that, but what you did was funnel, was helped me out a lot with with looking for an outlet. You, you hear that kind of stuff, you fly my way, okay, um now. We know about the two drukes going, I wanna go uh and do grants as a deal. Um, just spare me a second.
You've been on this long.
I'm almost done.
It must have happened now.
No, I haven't, I started about twenty-five minutes ago, okay, I'm almost done. My opinion of the salt sand shed is it should be abandoned, we should pay off the bill, we're, yeah, I don't know the relationship we've had with Marla here.
So that's another discussion, that's not a.
Well, that's.
Well, okay, well, okay, I see, it could be.
Right, okay, so I'm gonna just make my point, um. Find out who you own, pay it and stop getting them to stub warm line out, we discussed it last time, we don't know where Rom Bell is at. I think we need to find out and put a stop to it, my opinion, now that my opinion has been that way. But it also got helped last Friday because Mark and I had a big discussion about that. And I would like Mark, just for a minute, to share his thoughts about rebuilding of the salt and sand shed.
I would suggest that if there's another area in his presentation, we can deal with that then.
Okay, okay.
Is that?
When you, when your thoughts are spending Arba money, you said.
Okay, what I'm thinking of is we abandon that, we got eight thousand dollars in that, in that shed fund. We can use that to our advantage to rebuild that same salt shed, I would have looked at today. Actually, the salt part of it is eleven feet, Mark and I discussed it, and if I miss some points later, come up with it, Mark. Mark stated to me that has an asphalt, uh floor underneath the salt part, so that works. What the problem is, is the supports for the, for the building and the, and the six by sixes. And the, and the outside sheeting and Marco can go into that more, we talked about that, he's a, he's a wood man. Then we also thought what we could do is leave that in its way, where where it is, rebuild it. And add a metal building on the side, which we gotta finance or use Arba funds for, Mark showed. And I got a question for you in a second, Mark, consideration of putting gravel in in that, in that, in that shed. Or one way, shape or form, there's three bays and one is now, and an additional steel building, we could work that out. Uh my question to Mark was, I as- I assume, Mark, that one of those bays is to mix the salt and sand together, is that correct?
Yeah, two of those bays hold the woodchick stand in the first bay, so. Usually grab a scoop to mix with the sand.
Okay, I'm gonna let you talk more about.
In the parking area or?
You know, it's done uh. A load of sand and then salt gets sprinkled in a scurrager bucket, they dump it over, keep turning it until. It's mixed well and pushed in.
Okay, the point here is, we don't have to spend eighty thousand dollars, one, two, we don't have to have any permits. Three, we can rebuild that building for a mo- modest amount, reasonable amount of money, to be determined, there are twenty-four six by sixes. You said it was a hundred dollars a piece for for a six by six right now?
For, I looked online and the first point it popped up, pressure treated, six by six, twenty foot wide. It came up a hundred and eight, I was like, that's just one.
I'm almost done. So to me, we have eight thousand to start with, we could maybe use a little bit of the Arba money for the, to construct a building. This is all be determined, this is like I said, it's all consideration, to put this all together, we don't have to go to all this expense of eighty thousand bucks. And we don't know if it's gonna be eighty thousand dollars, it could be more than that, the way things are coming. We can re- and then Marco speak to the rebuilding part of it and his, and his road thing at at a minute. But I think that's a, it just works because that, that salt and sand shed away is now, has worked for sixty years, seventy years?
No, I got one, it's Kerry, the one building, the con, what's that?
Uh they did the gr- the grader shed.
Oh, the grader shed, never mind.
The salt sand was older and I think, I'm gonna guess the sixties, maybe.
So sixty years old. So rebuilding that could be a consideration, save us a boatload of money and get our cake, I need to. Because we have to do all that stuff about the permits and I would put an additional building, Mark showed us, great deal of interest when he was talking to me about having. Gravel under, under shelter was rather.
Yeah, the the three-quarter inch pressure stone, it worked so well for my season and last season we. Uh put tarpsover a bunch of roads, it didn't work, but it was still, the tarp's were covered with.
Ice.
Snow and ice.
Now, two points, that size shed that we need for that would only be like ten thousand bucks. I've looked it up, I've been looking at steel sheds like crazy, the expensive ones are three bays, like twenty to forty-five thousand dollars. And I'm almost done here, so he's gonna speak to that if we have, if I miss something. It looks like the roofing could be used, maybe could use, maybe it could be jacked up and the posts could be replaced, this could be looked at, but not eighty thousand dollars. My god, it's crazy, and we've, and we might have the hundred thousand dollars for this, and lastly. Now I'm looking at searching government agencies and legislative uh bodies, not limited to information to get money. For solar, insulation, ADA for the church, septic for the church, foundation for the church. And carbon drape affixy outside of the, of the addition, uh so that's ongoing. The rest is consideration, oh, one final thing, all these, all what's ever I didn't speak to on this list. Is is really nominal and can be dealt with later if we, it can be fit in, you know, and it's not like blanking, stuff like that, it's not, so.
I appreciate everybody's research on this and I'm just, just in quick summary, we're looking at, you know, discussing at some point. The merits of the salt sand shed and the maps that's response, that we're responsible for, maybe that having to come to Arba money. Renumeration for uh pay rates for county clerks and our other people who work here, that that might be considered. To stimulate the local economy using some Arba money for that, um and and to put a, 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 a slowdown on uh. Suzie's little penis or costs or money that would be spent on the uh daycare building. Um, we can look at, um then I talked about using some money for the DV fiber. And also maybe look at the bond money at a hundred thousand dollars, Bruce, you're interested in trying to see if we can use some of the Arba money to. Uh put a down payment on equipment such as the um uh excavator. Uh we also need to look at the uh mortgage costs and the contract services, which could be sources of some of the funding.
Lot of just both, please.
Yep.
Uh down payment, not on the excavators, according to, that depends if we want to, but according to what Chris was saying, is we just. This is a payment you wanna finance fifty thousand dollars.
If we, if we did do a stay, do a stay of that, if we did a stay loan at two percent versus a five and a half percent, that all, so that would might be something else. There's something to dis- to discuss and then more deep.
Find out at workday, yeah.
Right, it was forty-three thousand dollars, but twenty-seven percent of our budget. Uh we could, except look to see how the road fund can, can approve those things. Uh whether we're looking at uh uh equipping our road supervisors with appropriate tools like pressure washers or. Or grease guns and things like that, that might be uh something that Arba can be used for. You did give a list of things that Arba is not gonna be used for, I'm not gonna go through that right now, but we could look at a down payment for a piece of, another larger piece of. Uh of uh uh equipment such as a truck, if we can reduce, you feel that Arba money can be used to help to reduce. The uh footprint of energy for the town and that they're, uh you're willing to work with and find other sources of funding. Based upon the uh the government's new bills that they're putting out, maps that we can work with. And I think that there are people in the community that will help with that and I, I agree, and grants, we really need to get more into looking at the, at grants. Um, um, and you said that we could also look at uh using summary to, to build our salt and sand shed. Or improvements at that area, all, all very good ideas, I think that, but this, this is something that. We do need to have some work sessions, but we don't, we could have some special, we can invite more people in on this.
I don't think it's a bad idea that you set aside the seventh for anybody who wanna have their input. Uh I guess you're trying to get Steve Johns to come at that point and hell, I, I.
So here.
That gentleman that.
Yeah, I wanna, I just thought that there's some people that, you know, what is it that they can, what can, what is DV fiber gonna do for Brookline? And you know, do they have a formula? They're, they, when I talk to Stephen John, he says, well, uh it's whatever the town can afford. And out of their funding, based upon their other appropriations that they wanna see the money be used for, so he's just going to. Provide some, some insight to to us, but uh very, all very well, well thought out, thank you, everybody for. My head.
And I'll be done, I promise. Part of this, can you do it on my head? Well, this is what I did.
Let's go, let's go.
Okay, I raised, they, they raised the federal tax rebate on the, on solar panels from twenty-six to thirty percent. So now no longer are we in a rush or consideration of rushing it down by the end of the year, because it was gonna, it was gonna drop from twenty-six to twenty-two. But since the new law came into place yesterday, Alexander Cunningham from Silverman said, told me this, it's now thirty percent and there's no rush. So we can sit back, I'm talking with respect to Suzie, so I just really have respect to municipal order, but we don't have to rush that. We can um, we can work that as we need to.
Well, what I can say that the VCRD's climate catalyst innovation fund um is for rural development. They have providing twenty thousand dollars of grant funding towards local projects and there are, like you said, there are grants that are there. We just, we, we just need more people to help us do some of this paperwork, I know Sandy's been doing a terrific job looking at the current.
Maybe, maybe the uh the uh the drusel, we, we have.
Yes, and I also had spoke to Mike DiSocio today on the phone and he said he'd be interested in January getting involved. And I spoke to another gentleman, Mr. Silverman, um, um who moved into town and, and he would like to at some point, once it gets settled in. To, to get involved in some of the smaller committee work and just to get us speed, and so I think that, I think our outreach between the meeting house and whatever. For the people are saying, hey, you know, if you like what's going on, let's get involved.
Nine years, I've never seen Mike's fist exploding, I mean, the opportunity for money and if that hundred thousand dollars?
That would be, you have to, you have to understand this better and I think that's, that's, that's the point. We have a lot of attrition, the turnover, the sweat work, a lot of these things slip by, but we've had some stability here, so that's good.
You, you found that, that's great, anyway, go ahead.
Alright, I'm gonna move on next to the road supervisor's position, we talked about having a, a, a forum or something which shows. Rather than just having to always go back and Sandy, you said you were gonna put that together for us?
Not for today.
Oh, okay, alright, so we just said, um I talked with the treasurer and I asked her to um evaluate what was spent in the past year. In paying for Mark, because if we're gonna come up with a match, we need to have, what, what is the five, what is five percent of what? And so I asked her to work on that, but that's, that's nothing uh that we have to deal with tonight as far as the forum, but.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Then is that number for fiscal year twenty-two going to include the mistake that was made that was unadded back in? Is she gonna have adequate numbers as of six thirty or did the adjustment occur after six thirty?
Adjustment for the six dollar difference was only for one pay period, it was not an entire year, is that what you mean?
Uh I thought we had voted in August to make effective September first of twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
For the remainder of the fiscal year, the, the, the rate changed to thirty dollars now.
Okay, great, so.
So achieved, I know, apparently, I found out in the last month, but that didn't happen. Because the note, the message was not noted, so uh I'm assuming. That the correction was made perhaps after June thirty, so all I'm doing is pointing out that. When we get that number to try to calculate what we need to adjust for and looking forward. That we need to make sure that the number is accurate, reflecting the mistake being found and incorrected on it and added together that way. To come up with a number to determine what's, what's Mark said, yeah.
Good point, you know what I was thinking and I'm wrong.
Let's say that.
I was saying.
That's brave to say.
Yeah, I was saying September first to August thirtieth would have been twelve months with Mark, but technically. We raised it September first and the fiscal year goes to June thirtieth, so I gave her the wrong parameters to, to look up for me. I will correct those parameters with Melissa.
Uh, I was gonna just pop that, I needed to know, I'll, I'll catch up with you.
Alright, so that's, that, this was, this is uh to be uh addressed, okay, thank you. I never didn't, wasn't thinking of it that way, alright, um continuing on with old business, if you don't mind, I tell you. We ordered uh cameras, which were cellular and solar and a hundred thirty photos and thirty-two gigs SD backup. Card for photos, there are monthly plans available when it gets installed, uh it hasn't been delivered yet. Uh I happened to have ordered the same camera personally with uh to, to put up and this way, Mark and I can both. Learn together on, on, on the system networks, so there you go, so that, that's, mine's, mine's coming. On Monday the twenty-second and I think you're, the other one the town ordered, I talked to Gaitanza and I think our, this is. Yours is coming tomorrow, even though it was ordered after mine, but it's coming Thursday.
Quick comment?
Yes.
I would caution everyone to not stay where they're being put up, because it's telling people where to stay away from. They wanted to wonder whether it's.
That green iron bridge will never be the same again. Okay, alright, next item here, there was a mention of uh of the generator uh and possible some tampering. Uh of the fuel and so it's important that we get that uh machine securely set up and if. We need some additional security, this additional.
Mark and I are.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to bring that, that we are aware of that, um next item is salt sand shed, let's discuss it now. Discussing on moving forward with the project or not, uh when the regional commission would like an update from Brookline, I know. Wyndham Regional Commission would like an update from Brookline, I know Sandy's been in touch with, with Margot Gia on this. And, um, I think you had some information from them about the pros and cons of delaying, putting out to a bid or postponing or, or canceling. So what, what could you share with us on that?
Uh, I asked if the original bid by Ron Bell, I emailed both Ron Hunt from B-Trans and Margot Gia from Wyndham Regional Commission because they're both together on this project. They both interact and they copy each other, the emails they send to me and they copy the emails they send to each other. So it's a, it's a three-person loop. And so I emailed this to both Mr. Hunt and Ms. Gia. And, uh, I asked if there are any changes for Ron Bell to do the constant upgrades or updates of the plan scope. And essentially, uh, Ron Hunt said, and I'll quote, "Changes to the bid documents are mostly administrative type things and should not result in charges to the estimate." So that answered that question.
So there's no original charges?
None anticipated.
Okay.
That doesn't mean he's guaranteeing it, that's his feeling, there should be none. Uh, I, I'm gonna skip one because Margot Gia got back to me at the last minute. And if I can find that right now, I'll be able to continue on and then I'll finish it, otherwise I'll put it on. Uh, I made copies of both documents, I got a Margot Gia's answer after the fact. Can I go over them now? Sorry, if you can find it, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll just go past it. Uh, I said, uh, "Given the project timeline for completion being June thirtieth of twenty twenty four, would it be practical if costs begin to lower to put out a bid in late twenty twenty three and construction to begin April one of twenty twenty four? Given volatility of prices, this might be hard to answer, but I wish to be able to provide a worst case scenario to the select. The answer was, I would like to see this shed built, but I don't want to see the town waste money. So I'm open to another extension, extension of time if necessary." So he's willing to extend that date past six thirty twenty four if we found it to be helpful.
Okay.
Uh, next question I asked is, "My understanding is that the project is to prevent contamination of surrounding stream wetlands. Is that correct? Or have tests been done to determine if contamination has occurred, which now needs to be addressed? I have not noted any reference in the project documents as to actual contamination." Which is why was, "I don't believe any specific tests have been done or that there are any specific issues to remedy." The intent just being, finding our shed funding was to prevent future runoff from sheds with no deteriorating flood systems that would locate adjacent to wetlands." So, uh, there is no contamination that anyone has detected. That was a question we had because it might have affected whether or not we decided to draw.
Oh, horrible.
We have choices, in other words.
That's a reason.
Okay, question E is in my note, "If the town withdraws from the project in brand, does such withdrawal have an adverse effect on the town obtaining future grants?"
Good question.
And he responded, "If the town redraws, uh, withdraws from the project, you'll have to pay back any federal funds expended to this point. While withdrawing does not explicit, explicitly ban you from future awards, there is a question on our risk assessments dealing with past performance on similar grants." So the subtle.
Oh, boy.
Did it agree to.
Give me a break.
Adversive there.
So if we withdraw from the project, it may adversely affect future grants because of a risk assessment that we did not follow through on one of the federal risks. Now, is this, how, how much money have we expended? How much federal money has been sent?
None right now.
Yeah, right.
Uh, correct. My, there is no federal money that has been spent yet to my understanding. We have sent checks for the quarterly millions that we get from Wyndham Regional. We sent a check to pay for the attorney to research right away. We have, uh, which was like two hundred and fifty bucks.
Uh huh.
We paid every little fee that has come our way. And, and I'm, I believe me, I've gotten none, no money back from B-Trans, which, which seems to imply to me, it was a question I did not ask, but it, it would be an obvious conclusion that with not having received any money, they're assuming that it's part of our match. So we haven't used any of their money, we should not have to pay any money at this point in time.
Is that Margot Gia that wrote that?
Uh, no, that was, as I mentioned at the beginning, it's, uh, it's, uh, Mr. Hunt, Chris Hunt.
Mr. Hunt and his position is?
He's director of the program Wyndham, Wyndham, no, he's not Wyndham Regional, that's Chris Campi, Chris Gia. Yeah, he, this guy is the head of department at B-Trans, uh, that controls this kind of grant. Uh, Margot Gia responded my, to my question about what changes or effects, no. My question to her was, uh, back when Dot and I had a discussion with both her, Margot and Chris, uh, we were trying to pin down costs. At the time, we asked, since there was a reference in one of the documents to the manage, Wyndham Regional's management fee being ten percent of the project plus these other little things that would get added. And I asked her what her, what the number was and she said she couldn't tell me because it was gonna be renegotiated. Uh, she responded like at five o'clock and I read in the email at five forty or five forty-five. She said that there will be, uh, minor changes. And it's not because they're changing the rate on us, it's gonna be determined by the number of reviews that she has to do uh, as a part of any changes to the package that are made by Ron Bell subsequent to requirements by the state. She does do a quarterly import, but it's all, uh, she, she checks some things, um, like every time, every time she makes a phone call to Ron Bell, there's a bill. Every time she emails one of us and this is probably gonna generate a bill. Not much, but it is an expense. If I were to estimate on what we spent thus far, I'm gonna say it's less than fifteen hundred dollars total thus far. That's been expended on the project and it's, I, it appears to me to be handled as is. Uh, I have not received any notification from Margot or Chris that a check has been sent to the town of, of Brookline uh, above and beyond our match. It's just nothing, so we're, I'm so mature, I'm, gotta be paying it off at this point.
The ten percent char, the ten percent Wyndham Regional fees, the ten percent of the total cost of the project is Wyndham Regional's contracted payment from the town of Brookline. And they were gonna renegotiate that amount to another percentage or you're saying they're gonna keep that ten?
I'm sorry, but I can't help with that yet. Uh, that, the, the response, that was something like that. And I, and I took it to mean that whatever the percentage was back when might be modified to another number other than ten percent. And, and it's ten percent plus the cost of the attorney did the title search and a couple of things there. So apparently they're sticking to the ten percent. The thing is, is that between the time this all started, where we had two hundred and twenty one thousand, the anticipated total cost is at three seventy two, not counting the recent, more recent changes, which brings it closer to four. So, uh.
Ten percent, a ten percent, a ten, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it would seem to me like, you know, you're talking, it could be forty thousand. I, I probably need to follow up with another question. Which number are you basing that ten percent on? Is it the two twenty one originally or is it the three seventy two that was revised last August? Or is it gonna be another number depending on what it ultimately turns out to be?
And that's in addition to, let's say, the eighty thousand match?
Yes, if you mind if I fill room and definitely add it.
Spend time, did that little part that you just wrote, it's in the paper? I just like to.
Which, which, uh, yeah, you mean her responses?
Uh, his, I forgot his name, the head of the.
Ron, Ron, uh, Ron.
I just wanna read that one more time.
Sure, uh, here's, I have another one somewhere in Mark's paperwork where I, I can quote it exactly. But that's what Margot basically said. Oh, wait a minute, is, is this serious?
I think that's it right there.
Uh, this is, this is, this is.
In addition to.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
In addition to our.
Oh, here's Margot's response, it didn't really kinda answer. She says, my, my, my comment to her was, or the question, "In our discussion back in May, April, May about materials and labor costs, one of the topics was the Wyndham Regional management costs. At that time, it was stated that a revised contract was to be implemented later in twenty twenty two. Any idea when that would be discussed and what the dollar amount might be?" That was my question. She replied, "The main reason to update the Wyndham Regional Brookline agreement is because of the ending date being this year. I don't necessarily anticipate, and it's not the ending date this year, any changes to the Wyndham Regional management costs, but we have to double check with our finance administrator. The only thing that might affect a potential change to the cost part of the agreement is the extra time we have put into this project to resubmit RFPs, et cetera." So she's basically, it appears to me, every time we, like, I'm, I'm gonna call the guy that bid on the onsite inspection. I gotta talk to him.
Oh, yeah, but they, you know, that was.
Is he gonna change or not and or how long is he gonna hold it? Because we conceivably now may have an ending date deflated in six thirty twenty four. If we stick with it, if we decide to do that, you know, so, uh, she's being nebulous, she's not getting a number as she did before. I can understand that, yes, changes are gonna happen. And the fact that we didn't go forward it this year, the only thing I can grasp from what she's trying to say is that she may have to do another review when we put out another bid. She's gonna have to bid again for the, a product person to do the job, go through the review process that you and I did with her where she just sends us that special form, then we check these seven items, does it seem reasonable, plausible, et cetera. So all that's gonna cost money. So it seems to me she's saying, but I, I do wanna pin her down, what is that? The, the original quote I'm calculating in the original documents of this process was to assume the management fee is only ten percent of the cost of the bill. So I, I need to tie her back into that statement and see what, what she says. If she says, no, it's not, it's gonna be your current amount plus the cost of review each time you extend it.
Yeah, yeah.
Or each time we need to review it and/or each time we get an honor fee or something. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's, I wish there was a simple answer.
Well, that's the problem. And, and I think you've been really clear and you've really gotten into this. But this, these two sentences really don't make me happy. I thought I, to be as spelled correct. This was, let's just, yeah, so I take a minute, I only take a minute for everything, right? "If the town withdraws from the project, you will have to pay back any federal funds expended to this point." Okay, that's maybe a fact.
Yeah.
Okay, but we haven't. Then he goes on to say, "While withdrawing does not explicitly ban you from future awards," but if you screw it, no, I'm not gonna put it that way. "There is a question on our risk, there is a question on our risk assessments dealing with past performance on similar grants." So he's saying, because we're withdrawing because we don't feel works for us, that that's a bad performance with relation to how they're gonna judge, whether they're gonna give us another grant of this, of this type of similar situation. Last point, I believe that we're, if we did withdraw out of this, we don't have another grant for this type of a project. We're not gonna build another shed, we're not gonna build another. So what he's talking about here is not applicable to anything we would go down. We're not talking about a grant for, for paving or a grant for some other things in town. We're not building another building is what I'm saying. And that's the way I read that. Uh, and I thought, go ahead, yeah.
When you're done, I'll, I'll.
Go ahead, go ahead, I spoke my piece.
We, we, we've been at this since two thousand and seventeen.
Yes, that's what I'm telling you.
Uh, and there are things that we, we should have been doing, could have been doing along the way, which we, we didn't. And it's not that anybody's at fault for that. The, the issue is, we, we need to look at where we are today and where we're gonna go. Forget about what happened in the past and, and, and it shouldn't be a blanking. Uh, the, the thing that, uh, I am afraid will affect us. And I, I, I think I mentioned this to a friend at some point in the last two, three weeks is, uh, I, I see, when I look at something, I look at both ends of the spectrum.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's lots of things in the middle. But, but the first thing to do is we're in this field, we have been for several years. They've put a lot of coin into it, helping us to set it up. They've done the monitoring, et cetera. So they have a vested interest in it. And it probably makes them look bad if they can't find a place for the money. And though you are, Wyndham Regional Commission makes their money on doing these kinds of options. Okay? Whether or not just this project, but.
Is it Wyndham Regional that guy?
No, I have, he has B-Trans.
But they work together, okay.
Chris Campi works at Wyndham Regional, he's their head. And Chris Hunt is the head of his department at B-Trans, whatever the department is.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay.
I want to say agent grant, I'm pretty sure it's agent grant. Uh, I look at the other, the other end of the spectrum is whether we get it from the citizens in the town who are aware of this, whether we get it from Wyndham Regional, whether we get it from B-Trans or any other casual bystander that wants to express an opinion. Somebody's gonna say, you're getting a four hundred thousand dollar building for eighty thousand dollars, what's the complaint? So there's that end of it. And then I can also tell you that I hear your point about this is about a building structure. But I can tell you for a fact, when I used to be in banking and we went to a conference and you sit from the other bankers in the county that the bank was in that I represented, it's not uncommon to not pick the bad guys out there and talk about the bad guys who are running around the table. But you run into a situation where something unusual happened, something unexpected happened, something that did not affect your institution or your community well, that can come up. And you have no, you know, we have no control over who's sitting at that table. So if this issue were to arise at a B-Trans conference, who's to know whether an MLRP guy, uh, GP guy is there or an agent grant person is there or some other person? And, and then we apply for a grant and the name of our client comes up.
You're talking about black calling. You're talking about black calling.
You know, it's like, uh, yes, it's, that's, that's a more direct way of what I'm reading.
Oh, for sure, I got it.
And, and it's, it's nothing we have any control over other than how we conduct ourselves and the relationships we have. So I, 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 uh, you know, uh, so, so, you know, I just, I'm, I'm gonna throw that out for contemplation and just, uh, over. And, uh, and, and the fact, I, I frankly was expecting that kind of comment.
You were.
And yes, because I've been through too many things.
He's experienced, so he'll show you.
And, and, and probably as you all have, when you're doing something that affects somebody that they perceive as negative, you, you end up finding these little, uh, comments that don't line up with, hey, we're all, we're all living and if we feel that that's too much for us, we're gonna bomb out. It's, it's not without reading sometimes hard feelings. And I think, I think we need to weigh that, we need to weigh that.
Well, he made his point, the shot, I agree.
And, and in respect to what you said, that we're, there's no other types of grants that we would be getting in those, but we do get grants from B-Trans and we do get grants from different.
Oh, I know. I, I told, I was talking about specifically what he was talking about. And, and, and I wish, it was based on, on what he, what his jurisdiction is. But Stan more than eloquently explained how that could work in there with you.
I'd like to make a recommendation that I, uh, the, I will talk, find out more specifically about that municipal bond money and where it is really at. Ideally, if that is paid off this year, that would be our match.
That was a dedicated on, would it, at the end of that payoff, would, would that?
Should be open, that's what I'm gonna find out.
The way for this to run is.
If, if it's paid for, if it's been reimbursed, I'm gonna, that's what we need to find out.
Or, or for your.
Yeah, and that, that would look a lot better for us to say, we found the eighty thousand dollars in another account. We didn't realize we had it. And wanna check our minutes at the meetings, go right ahead. It's, it's not because we didn't do something and don't wanna pay down the line for something we could have done or been doing and did. It looks totally.
Different.
A versus B, it's a different category of case.
So let's, let's postpone making a decision about, well, I, I don't know how, what kind of update does Margot want from you?
But the question. And how soon? She was looking for, she, she's, she's pushing harder than, than anyone else and I can understand why. She's probably planning on what the agency's income is gonna be based on what we're gonna do. And I suspect that her job is paid by these kinds of projects.
I mean, I hired another person based upon all of the salt shed grants that are housed in the community, New Fane and whomever else. They hired additional sand power to cover this.
So there's, there's another, there's a whole other reason for their interest and, and her wanting to know that. I have no problem saying that, uh, and she got a copy of Chris's, that we, you know, we're at this point comfortable just staying where we are, and we'll review the whole thing at the end of the year. We're not asking him to do anything uh, other than sit and wait. Not asking him to, okay, because we're changing.
Okay. As long as they're not ringing up, they're not ringing up anymore.
At this point, we can make our decision whenever we find out what we need to find out what we want.
Right, but we're not ringing up anymore money.
I don't feel it's like for them to be able to judge us about getting money again, not knowing what our budget is in this town. I mean, they get.
It's, it's, it sounds, yeah.
They don't know that we may not be able to afford it. They're just expecting us to afford it, and.
Not, well, there's other things that I'd rather not get into, that, 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 every time, every time someone signs an agreement with them, with this project, there's a, there's a paragraph at the bottom, and it says, we have been maintaining our match amount and are actively implementing it to, to, uh, meet our obligation in this, and then it's not X for signature and a date.
But in the meeting, like you said, this was two thousand, two thousand seventeen, and we were ready at that point. We thought it was a small amount.
Oh, you said that.
We absolutely, it's been something.
And since then, we've had COVID pushed us out a couple of years. We've had inflation that's pushing us out another couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. But they shouldn't rock us for that.
And we also.
Well, I, I believe that if we hadn't gotten our vote.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I, what you're saying is not wrong, yeah, it's, you know.
No, he's right, but the problem is, is how they perceive the situation.
I also am wondering, since the inflation of this whole situation has brought us to this point, um, are we locked in? Can we downsize?
No, it, it's very, very.
Now, very shocking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I think we really can't, that would be a whole revision of all, like, architecting designs.
No, that's not everything. Right, that's one part of it.
You take what Ron's design, that he set to look, they just cut it in half.
He would think it's easy.
Same size, except for the width, make it something that more fits the town's eye.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm having, probably one thing has nothing to do with what we're talking about. Is I, from what you're saying, by standard, you're correct in the law, is you're not getting enough to write the answers out of Margo's G. Is that correct?
She's, if you, if you, if you look at what's kinda happened, it, I can understand her saying that. What, and, and when I look at,
Specifically.
She can't give me a number because she doesn't know how many times it's gonna change. What does she do? She says it's gonna have how many changes. Basically, you're changing. And, and what is changed? Just, just the dates alone, she's been looking for a month. Because it's all gonna be through RFPs, soliciting bids, whether it be for the project itself, or whether it be for the onsite management. You know, those are things that are gonna happen, and she's right there. But she, she hasn't, she hasn't clarified. I mean, there's a dollar amount that's in the chart that they sent out as a result of discussions that were held on August twenty first of two thousand twenty one. And that shows that number approaching twenty eight or nine thousand dollars.
Us.
At, at, yeah, what her expectation was.
In a recent year, that's.
It cost to us to pay that, their bill to us, and we're just.
In, in the, in the light of trying to conserve some time, and I don't know how long our battery's gonna last, but I do wanna say one thing.
Okay. Okay.
If you wanted to throw out to Margo, just the question about what would the reduction in size shrinking the project cost us, number one. And number two is, unlike New Fane, which had five hundred thousand dollars in their rainy day fund, we this year just put in the first twenty thousand dollars rainy day fund. And the title Brookline has returned to the taxpayers thirty five thousand dollars one year.
Yes, twice.
We, 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 we returned money that should have probably been saved for match, but.
You know, wrong. Well, you don't have to justify it to them.
No, we returned it to the taxpayers, so.
Right, but that's not gonna, that's.
It's not gonna solve any problems right now, but.
No, so, that's not gonna solve a relationship issue.
With who?
With that gentleman that.
Oh, you mean just we give it to.
Yeah, that, that, that is not, but I, I gotta say something here. I personally feel that the decision whether or not we continue this should be a citizen's decision. When I read in This Morning's paper, what the town manager at Bucky said, who lives in New Fane, and what the select board is doing in New Fane, even though they've got the ten, five, five hundred thousand dollars, they're not taking it upon themselves to automatically go and make up the difference. They're saying to the public, I value your opinion. What do you want us to do? And I suspect that this, this building that we're dealing with, that was in no way ever expected to reach approximately four hundred thousand, and we don't know where it's gonna end.
Right.
They, they might, we, I personally feel they should be asked the question, whether it be at a special town meeting, or whether it be put on next town meetings again. And that, that in and of itself, if they decide they don't wanna do it, the citizens say it's too expensive, we don't wanna do it. It, it's, it's a town decision. And this guy, whatever he is, uh, whether or not we experience a white wall experience or not, it is, it is a decision that, uh, that the town has made.
Well. Do I misunderstand that it's really a select board's, well, I disagree. The select board's purview to do something like this, but your consideration
Yes.
is a consideration in the public, and I understand.
Right, right now, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, and now we're gonna, we're gonna just, rocks, isn't it, whatever.
I think, I think we are, we need to learn more details involved before we start thinking about, and I know it's not right now, you're talking town meeting or whatever, but we get, tighten it up a little bit better as far as exactly where we're at, I guess, it's.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna tighten it up anymore.
No?
No, I, I, you know, what, what are we gonna tighten up?
Well.
We know that the costs are undeterminable.
That's true, okay.
The stuff I just read, uh, again, online yesterday indicated that there is gonna be no reduction in building costs, and probably another ten to twelve percent increase. So, you know, uh, that's, the, the chart I brought in last night showed everything but one category continuing to go up. Uh, gas in the state of New Hampshire, heating fuel oil, is apparently currently six dollars a gallon, and they figure by the end of twenty twenty three,
Jesus.
it's gonna be eight dollars a gallon. So what is that gonna mean for what we're paying, what anticipated costs are?
Well, that's.
There's nothing that's gonna change in this project.
Well, that's her point.
Other than what we have to match. And, and so, the, the decision to me, it's, 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 you know, obviously, either we do it, or we say, people, it's your money, what do you wanna do? We can tell you what we think if you'd like to hear. But, uh, it's, uh.
We need a whole meeting to, right there.
Okay, I'm gonna, in, in the light of the timing, I'm gonna suggest that we put this back on the agenda for September twenty first. We talked about the salt shed shit, and the question about whether or not to go out to the public for a special town meeting to discuss this, this concern that we have, and maybe we will have more information.
Okay. And I know, but one more question, we need to move on, because we need to move on.
Yes.
Um, that, okay, in light of what's happening, what was the original number, what, two hundred, some odd thousand dollars?
Twenty twenty one.
I know, it's four hundred thousand in five years, right, seventeen to twenty two? So based on that percentage, we go up another year or two, we're gonna be up to five hundred thousand dollars.
So what was that twenty thousand, now eighty?
And we should go to a hundred.
When it's done, it actually is a hundred.
So what, at what point, I want my quick question, if I tell them, I wrote that note there. At what point does a town of five hundred and some odd people get to pull out because they just can't swing this kind of money? It started off as X amount of dollars, now it's ballooned to this, and for all the reasons, okay, all the reasons, he knows.
We need to move on.
Yeah, we, we already talked.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you all the same, same time.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can revisit.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to reports, Mr. Phil, just wanna give us a.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, uh, let's see.
Reports and updates.
Uh, yeah, you want to consult, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mark?
Um, so the paving was completed outside the West River, and it also turned out nicely.
I did get a written confirmation from Mr. Clark, Mr. Archie Clark, that he also feels that the job was done sufficiently, and that we can release the funds for that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's too, it's all right.
Uh, so I've been working through a lot of, uh, ditching, cleaning ditches for better drainage, also road improvements, and this does, um, fall into place with our road segment, uh, upgrades for the state. Um, and I feel like, without measuring yet, because I've just, I've been busy going from job to job in town, that we have at least, I'm gonna say, four or five, maybe even six segments, um, almost complete since this time.
Right.
There may be some minor details that, but for the most part, I believe we're, we're catching up rather well.
Great, thank you.
Um, from our last meeting, we approved, uh, ledge removal, which took place, um, just shortly after the meeting there, I was able to match up with, uh, Clarks with their hydraulic hammer was moved into place, and they uh, hammered the, the ditch, a nice, uh, two foot deep ditch to allow water to continue where it never used to be able to. And at the same time they were doing that, I was moving the ledge to ensure that we had the right depth. And I started digging across the road behind the, the hammer while he was in the ditch. And there was ledge a little bit more than halfway across the road, which, uh, there was never room for a covert to cross the road there. So we now have a, a new covert in a new area. Um, it turned out being, uh, a fifty foot length piece of covert, that's two twenties and a ten that I had at the shed, of eighteen inch. And so everything has been stone lined and, uh, graded, fresh gravel over the top. And I believe that section of road will be good for, let's use a term.
Do we have to GPS that and send that to Joe Nugent?
Yes, yes, correct. Yeah, that will be a new site, and we'll have to be coordinated. Um, at, at any time, if anybody, uh, has a minute to drive, so it's, uh, passing this road, you'll, you'll see, uh, a lot of improvements, roads, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I've done that, yeah, last week. I'll do it again.
Okay, definitely. There's still, like I say, a few details, uh, some more seeding and hay in certain areas, um. Also Whitney Hill has a new covert replacement, which that was done prior to weeks, but, um,
Wow, great.
Done some more stone lining up there, ditch cleaning. Uh, Parker Road has new covert by rear bridge with some stone lining. And we also, at the end of the town road, where everybody turns around, uh, have clean ditches and corrected the water, and clean culverts following to the end. Um, so I've been able to, uh, they brought up the mower for the rented excavator, and, um, it's called a mulcher head, which is, uh, I, I've never, prior to this, never operated one. I've, I've used an actual brush hog. That worked well. Um, I've used, uh, they call it a rotary flail, uh, mower, and that worked well. They, they all worked pretty much, uh, the same with the exception of the type of material you, you're mowing, so. This mulcher head is phenomenal in wood fiber. It will, I was even grinding, grinding off stumps on that side.
I saw that. I saw that.
It's made for that. It'll grind a tree off. You can reach up as high as you can and nip the tree off, and then shred it to the ground. The bigger the machine, the, the bigger the mulcher, the bigger the tree you can take back. This actually worked well in gaining that, uh, right of way, you know, forty five feet from road center out. Um, we have the ability to go out at least that far. Um, and I've been trying to gain back the corners, the intersections, um, spending more time rather than one pass going back and getting rid of the leafy trees that are blocking views. So this rented mulcher has worked excellent for that. You'll also notice, though, that it, it doesn't do good in grass. It more or less knocks it over. It's, the design of it, just, it's, it's got, um, carbide teeth, but they're spaced out four inches on a rotary, and so, um, for, for that reason, it, the grass just doesn't, it doesn't chop, it spins it off. So it's worked well. Um, another year, if we were to rent, I would probably, my favorite would be the brush hog on the end of the boom. And that, that really does a neat job of mowing grass. It'll mow briars, it'll mow saplings. So just for, I'd say every five to ten years, you could rent a mulcher for a week and let it go back. But the brush hog is something you could use more or less the whole summer season. So as, at first, I was a little disappointed on the grass, but once I got using it into the, the right of way with the weeping wrens, it really, uh, and I know there's places, it, it shreds it, and it's not pretty, but it'll, it'll blend in eventually. There's areas where I'm going back with chainsaw to improve the, the curbside peel. Um, let me see. So I was asked, uh, last year, if I had time to mow behind the soccer field, and we ran short, and, um, I was a little nervous about going out there with the weight of the machine, and I was gonna save it for the last day of the rentals. And then I, I was hearing rain was coming, and so this morning I got up and I headed for it, thinking it's been so dry. It's gonna hold me up. Dry, drier will be the trick. So I went out and, uh, spent a couple hours, uh, on the school property and, and it, it liked the, uh, the knotweed. You know, I start at the top and take the leaves off, and then keep going down a couple feet. Otherwise, it just balls it all up, and it pulls it up roots and all. But the thing about this mulcher is you can, uh, mulch with it one direction, and then you can back, back up over it, and it kills it.
Ah.
So I was able to get all the stalks that were laying down prior to here, and all the little stubs sticking up, worked them right into the ground. And because it has these hardened carbide teeth, if you hit a rock, it doesn't affect it. Um, so, so you can hold it right in, a little bit into the dirt, and, uh, it just shredded it finally, and it made a neat spin job look there. So, um, so that went good this morning. I also went behind the school and talked to Bruce about, uh, running three pine trees, and so I drove down in to look, and there was so much stick brush around those trees. And I wanted to cut them kind of parallel to the brook off the mowed section, so that, um, the brush would be out of the way. So I, I was able to sit on the mowed section and just shred everything where the trees will be following, so that it'll make the tree work a lot simpler, easier. Um, so that's correct for, uh, a weekend day, or, uh, Bruce said he might be closed a couple days.
Yeah, they close next Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So, um, we, we got the machine on the eighth of July, six weeks out. Would it have been, uh, Friday?
We'd do it this Friday, yeah.
So because we, you guys had allowed to ask for one more week, the twenty sixth will now be the last day of rental.
Can I interrupt at this point?
Yes.
All right. I was confused because, uh, with the bill that we got, and Judy called me up, and she emailed it to me. And so I wrote and I shared with you all, trying to understand the billing cost for the. And so I wrote and I shared with you all, trying to understand the billing cost for the with the machine and the mowers and such. It turns out, making a long story short, well, for the record here, um I'm trying to determine if it's going to cost Brookline more to rent the JVC with two buckets and steel wrist for seven weeks, which is what the select board approved at the special August ninth meeting, that it would be to rent it for a total of two months, eight weeks. It seems that one month is billed at sixty-six hundred dollars, but one week is billed at two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So an additional three weeks at two thousand six hundred and forty dollars would be seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. It would actually be one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars less if we did it for the full month or eight weeks. Is my understanding correct? The sepi mulcher head is rented at a cost of one thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars a week. When Mr. Bill calls you to let you know he's done with the mulcher, you said that you will set a fixed cost for the actual use, understanding that we lost a day. Well, I don't know if we're gonna be able to negotiate that, but we lost a day of time due to a bad tire. The town has already sent in a payment of eighty-one hundred dollars for one month of the excavator, its buckets, and the fifteen hundred dollars round trip free delivery pickup fee. Since I have a meeting tonight, I'd like to know if my understanding of the seven week versus eight week rental is really going to cost us one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars more, which incidentally is almost equal to the one week rental charge for the mulcher head. Please advise me. As response is, I was able to clarify that you have the rental for seven or eight weeks. It will still be the same price, six thousand six hundred dollars total. The weekly rate that I sent you of twenty-six tw- twenty-six forty automatically gets reduced in our system as soon as the rental hits its third week to match the monthly rate. Sorry, if that was confusing, I may have been misunderstood what you were trying to say, but I hope this clarifies things. And the bill would not increase from the sixty-six hundred dollars that you have already received. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
So he gets an eighty-three? Do I understand that already? Gets an eighty-three?
That's what it's, that's what, that's what it says. We, sounds like.
Get to work.
So I'm gonna confirm this, that we will do that for the same, for sixty-six hundred dollars versus the individual setup for the extra week of, which would have cost seventy-nine to twenty.
Oh geez.
And actually, it's the, it's thirty-five dollars less than the cost of the mulcher. So it's like they threw the mulcher in freely the extra week.
So he'll have it till the
I'm gonna, I'm gonna
I would concern that.
Let, I don't know about that.
So he'll
I I had it, I did see it.
Okay.
Yeah, I was reading your
So, so what do we, so what am I, are you, we're all on the same page? Does that makes?
That was sort of inquiry.
Now, just a moment. Is that Dan guy or?
Yes.
From what I understand, he and Chris are gonna be here next week, the way I understand it.
Oh, I asked, he said whenever you guys wanted to talk, just to let him know.
I thought he said he's gonna be here Tuesday or Wednesday. I couldn't remember the exact day.
Well, he's gonna be picking up the, who picks, who picks up the mulcher head and when we
It it was brought over by a technician, a mechanic.
Right.
From the same company?
From the same company, JCB mechanic.
Right.
And he installed a protective guard over the front windshield as well as putting the mower head on. So it wasn't a salesperson. Um and I asked him if somebody was waiting on the the mulcher head, that we had to have it back a certain date. And he said, no, nobody's waiting on it.
But
And cause I inquired, well, I missed a day of mowing, due to the fact of the flat tire. And he said, no, when you're done, uh he said, call when you start mowing. And as soon as you're done, um
When you call when you come that you're done, he will stop the billing. If they can't pick it up for four days, they're not gonna bill us for those four days, which is not kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, we should be well done uh
By then.
In two days, two more days, I think.
Okay, so
I mowed a total of like four days. Uh I lost a half a day, the day they delivered.
Right.
And then another half a day. So if you add up my time, four days mowing.
Right.
And probably a couple more will do.
Okay.
All right, so you'll have to call them in the next, I guess Monday, you're talking about Monday or Tuesday. What's today? Today's Wednesday. So when would you call them? Friday afternoon or?
I could try on Friday afternoon, yes.
All right, call them Friday afternoon in this, yeah. And and then that that will stop that particular billing cycle. And I will talk to him tomorrow again just to confirm.
It sounds like it would be true. You can rent it for four weeks for sixty-six hundred dollars, but you can rent it for eight weeks for sixty-six hundred dollars. Or is he saying sixty-six hundred per month?
Per, per month, sixty-six per
So that's sending thirteen thousand to
It says sixty-six per month. But like I said, the weekly rate of twenty-six forty for three weeks would be seventy
Something. Yeah, they always do that. Like if you rented it per day
It's a lot.
For four days, it would be cheaper to rent for five days. So then they charge you a week and then it falls to the month. So they're always saying get you to pay a little less to get a little more.
Right.
So
But if it can, will will this select board confer at some point with my discussion with them to if it's not gonna cost anymore than we anticipated, what we anticipated to spend for that seventh week
Yeah.
That definitely
in total with everything, if we're, if we can get the eighth week put in there, it's a no brainer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would work.
It might do have work that you can do.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Because one of the things that we can do with that esch, we're gonna get up on Putney Mount and fix that Bennett Road to the Johnny Swings area. Because that we don't have to subcontract. It's just moving dirt around, yeah. And and that would be the ideal.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, okay. So you could get that deal.
I, one day I can have the road passable and then if we wanna add some material after that, uh that's Well, see, I, I'm gonna, there's a lot of material for me to
And that was my concern about the trees. It sounded to me like we needed it for seven weeks because of things needed to be done.
Right.
And if that was gonna take, to me, three trees is two days. Maybe Mark does it in a day. I don't know.
Right.
But to me, in my mind, it's two days. And I'm thinking, we need it for seven weeks. Can we afford to lose two days out of that? It's just seven weeks.
Yeah. Well, here's gonna draw a weekend, but that's
Yeah, but it's still by hours. It might look like hours, yeah.
Oh, that's okay, okay.
Did we decide the hour meter, what uh the hours?
It's fifty hours a week, I think. Was it fifty? You think that's what you had on your, your info for the last meeting?
It says, did you, right? Yeah, um
It's fifty, fifty hours per week? And then there was a, there was another number for, and I forget what it was for.
I'm, I got it, hang on. Okay, um nine hours added, nine hours per day, fifty hours per week, a hundred and seventy-five hours per month. So it would be a hundred and seventy, be three hundred and fifty hours for two months. Your your meters should be no more than three hundred and fifty for the two months if we're gonna do it for the eight weeks. And I do, in the respective, but talking about the trees, um I was going to ask the select board permission for me to ask Mark. Remember this, this is the Anals Garden?
Yes.
Okay. Uh Lori would like to to donate a rock from their home set to be placed into the garden that we could put the plaque on. And if I could ask Lori to find the stone, I would like Mark to pick it up with that machine and leave it in the shed of the round schoolhouse until we get the garden going. Cause otherwise, how would we get that rock over there?
Yeah, I'd be wrong.
I don't know. See what she found.
Shed of our schoolhouse.
Not not the the round schoolhouse
Yeah.
area, you know.
Pretty good, that ditch, okay.
Yeah.
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 Just to deliver it from from the Anals Farm to the round schoolhouse for future use. If that's all right with you, to ask them to do that if I can coordinate that. All right, that was the only additional
Fine.
Are you done, Mark? You got more?
Uh yeah, I do. Um so I had a a call from a local contractor, uh calling about the RFPs that were put out and um
Oh. Okay.
Uh he he wants to do a review of one of the sites on Parker Road there. Um and then I was reading the email. It looks like uh FEMA has put a price on it already and things like that.
I've been in touch with FEMA and I was asking her, you need to pull that. It was an error and I wanted to go out to you. I thought there were two sites on Parker Road that were FEMA. One, which was ditching and and repairing road damage with material and the other was sidewalling the stream bank, which needs to be armored with that with that wall.
Yeah.
Which is what we put the RFP. But FEMA has a price of twenty-something thou- two thousand something dollars on it. And I'm a little, so I I'm, everybody female and then Jessica's out and now I'm dealing with another woman.
Right. Um so I think since Scott Jensen came and lived um at the job and I happened to meet him there with Archie and we showed him the issue and then he told us what he would like to see. So it's kinda changed a little bit from uh the original. I I think when FEMA looked at it, they might have looked at it a little differently, but because we had to get the permit from Scott Jensen A and R, um he would like to see some of the material pulled up out. And he called it keying in, which your base rocks are the biggest rocks, like four foot diameter. Need to be set in at a certain, I I think you go just a little bit below uh brook surface. And and then you stack on top of those. So rather than back when the flood came through in Irene, they were doing like a, I don't know, if it was forty-five degree rock uh like a tumble rock wall. And that, at that time, that was what they were doing. Now they're doing the stacked wall. So he wants to see a stacked wall. So this material is there. I thought we would add to it, to what what's there already and call it good, but he wants to pull and start over. He wants to, the bottom to be stacked with a little bit of new material brought in that's more square for stacking. And it'll be a a little bit steeper of a slope up to the road. And then he also looking at the riverbed north of it wants to take one to two um loads of material out of the brook bed that has built up from flooding.
Is this been reflected in the RFP that I advertised?
Yes, uh
Okay, it is. Yes. Well, then I will talk to FEMA.
All but the, all but the price, uh
All but the price. But I will talk to FEMA and explain that it was the A and R person who has changed it since FEMA has reviewed it.
Right.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know. The A and R, uh uh what was this name? Scott, Scott Jensen. Okay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh the the estimate that FEMA responded to your inquiry uh of the dollar amount in that, is that only the amount they will reimburse? Or is that the amount they're telling us a whole project cannot exceed?
That was the amount that they've done with the project would cost based upon their evaluation of it. Uh however, it was not in consideration of of A, Agency of Natural Resources requirements to put in a different kind of setup.
And they were the ones that told us to tell A and R to uh
Right. So um I sort of put a stall, they said, well, you already signed off on it. And I said, I didn't think that this was the same project because there was no way that this stream bank worth is gonna be only two thousand dollars. I'm gonna make a long story short, we have to follow up and I may be calling you to to take some more pictures.
Okay. So so when I show the job, I
Show it the way you think.
Don't don't tell them that two thousand and
No, don't tell them that that's our our thing. Cause I'm gonna have, I think I'm gonna have FEMA have to, has to redo it. I'm gonna, there's a process I'm gonna have to do. I'm gonna do it, whatever the paper is.
So I guess the bottom line, what I'm asking is, can can the project total whatever's gonna total? And we still be responsible for twenty-five percent, meaning the project or twenty, whatever it is?
Ten now.
Ten?
We're only ten. They're doing ninety percent.
So yeah, we do need to know if that number's right, because it goes up to seven thousand in the final.
That's why we put in RFPs to honey in our request. So, so.
Thank you.
All right, I'll follow up on that too. Okay?
Okay. Um I've got most of Hill Road is mowed, uh Grassy Brook Road from the bridge over. I it's been, this is the toughest year I've seen for mowing. Looked down at traffic. It's doubled.
Yeah.
It's like holidays every day.
I know, it's people everywhere.
We just, we just get mowing a car and then another car and
They're all want so much to know and how you doing.
Yeah, maybe
It's just pretty amazing for the handle that time.
Yeah, well, uh one of the things that I wanna mention, last year when we rented the JCB, it came with a the two buckets and a steel wrist. This year, it only came with the two buckets. So it's made it a little different for mowing. When I mow, the it takes the debris in on the left side. So I have to swing around ninety degrees and drive down the road. So I'm I'm sometimes out in the other lane. But that, that steel wrist had been on there would have been nice because you could rotate the mower. So it's always straight and and therefore just swing the boom over, twist the wrist.
It does say steel wrist is included in it, but it's not the type of steel wrist that you like. The steel wrist is is
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not about three hundred, so it doesn't rotate.
Right. Yeah, yeah, it's different. Uh okay. So anyways, I mowed uh till Friday night. It was like five-thirty night coming up. Uh uh I knew when we got the machine that the tire I looked the machine all over. The only thing I could find faulty with the machine was one tire was worn thin. Uh the others were worn, but uh this one in particular had canvas showing. So it was it was, you could tell it's, it was almost down there. Well, I was in hopes it would go the length of the rental. So I got right in front of Parker Road, going back to the shop and pow, and the hairs coming out of the tire. And because there's two on each corner, I just kept driving, drove into the shed. And uh so I called and left messages for both Daniel and Chris. All Saturday, no one, I realized they probably had weekends off. So Monday called them. And they said it was our obligation to take care of the flat tire. And I said, but the, I didn't run over nothing. I didn't cut it. I said, it was just plain worn out. And actually, I'll back up. I called and left messages. Neither one would answer. I think they didn't know how to deal with it. So
Because they shouldn't have released the the unit with that way.
I told them that. I said, this tire was all when we got it.
What do you think, Steve?
I remember, Mark, I didn't know what you're confirming.
And uh I said, is that something that you're gonna take care of?
Oh no.
Oh, you you probably will have to do that. It'd be cheaper if you take care of it.
So we pay for, a new tire for all your rentals to them, actually?
He said, if we do it, we're gonna have to find somebody here and send them over.
Send them a check.
So, so the first thing I did was, I called where we have a tire cutter. And the guy says, I'm sorry, I don't have anything. I asked for a used one first. Don't have anything like that. I don't even have new tires that size. It's a special fourteen ply crane tire. Um so I called Pete's Tire Burn, which he closes just over the line. Um they didn't have anything used. He said he he checked his warehouse, called me right back. He called me back five minutes. Said they had one in a warehouse and I wanted it. It was four hundred and seventy dollars. Maybe have it by morning. So I said, I don't really have another choice. So you gotta let the machine go back with the flat cutter or absorb it. So that's when uh, I said, well, what about uh mounting it in a new tube? And so they came up with the price, seven hundred dollars, then bring it up, put it on. And he he had it on and snapped and feeling very nice people. So I gave them the town credit card number and he goes to town email. He was gonna email Bill. And he was also gonna mail a receipt. And um so it should have been a seven hundred dollar you know, I I asked the guy, I kept the tire so that we can show where I took my pictures.
Good. Good. Cause if they show up next week, I have not what to say. That shit had never been released on.
Well, I think if they see it, they would Well, I think if they see it, they would understand it was just common wear, it's probably the original.
But when they released it to you, it wasn't it wasn't inspected. What, no one let it walk around?
Yeah, anytime, yeah, anytime we're rented, they take pictures, they walk around, anything that's stained, scratched, bent, missing.
They didn't do that.
They'll take notes and uh.
But they didn't do that.
Uh.
They didn't do that, you got my answer?
I didn't see any.
Well, I've seen a people who've actually rented cars. Who had experiences, I've had, I've heard of two people who. Didn't, who didn't take photos themselves. And then when they brought it back, the bar work, the person that rented it, returned it in the same condition, but somehow later on. They get notification that there was a ding on the car that they, they didn't know about.
Yeah.
And they were they were approached to pay for it, so it probably would be a good idea ourselves to take photos.
Do it again.
Never gonna know, but.
Yeah, and those those kinds of things.
Have to create more work and hassle, but it's.
Right, um, so the the one of the last things here is um. A guy on the Athens Road, Grassy Brook, uh, came and got an application for a new driveway permit. And me and Archie went and talked to him. Made recommendations of what we would like to see as well as what he wanted to see, we. We approved and signed it and uh. I might have missed something in between, but the guy has been super nice about it all, he wanted to do the right thing. And me and Archie did go back up and inspect to make sure it was in compliance, right size culvert and Fahrenheit box road provision. And so the application calls for a select board signature to find out who.
Okay, so you recommend that that we sign off on it?
Yeah, I'm I'm I feel like I'm happy with the way it all went together and uh.
Okay.
Just a good, that's a true work?
No, no relation, he's a retired uh, power line guy. And moving up here from Pennsylvania, he'll be.
This year?
Over nine year September.
Alright, so it looks like we, they want all of our water grabs.
Oh.
And you want whatever, yes, I'm just wanting to find some of them.
There seems to have been a change in the audio.
Okay, can you hear us?
You know, you want.
Yeah, I can hear you, I'm hoping it's gonna last.
Yeah, we're we're, oh, we have to sign on.
Okay.
Is it more than one page?
There's there's a.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm gonna sign again.
The board was supposed to sign in between and.
Ah, alright.
Yeah, I see. Went in T M and uh, I didn't realize there was a second speed.
Okay, so we just we just filled it out.
Yeah.
Alright, if that's, is anything else, we can move on, just to close up?
Do you need to make a copy of this?
The only other thing Bruce had brought up, the, oh, the same check, I think we talked about it, but I think there is room for a lot of potential for. Repairs for future usage.
I think we're gonna bring it up at another meeting, so I spend a little bit more time based upon tonight's, we're waiting.
Yeah.
Sure.
What what date do need done this stuff?
Um, you could put today's date, it's just just the final approval meeting of uh, that he was in compliance and. And uh.
Okay, um.
Should I make a copy, are you gonna make copies or how are you?
If you wouldn't mind, I'm not sure how to run a copy machine and.
Okay, we'll do that at the end of the meeting, so we can move on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Um.
Or just leave it on.
Anything else for for um?
No, that that covers everything.
Okay, Sam, I'm gonna ask you highways and grants, um.
Let's see, uh. I uh, I uh, I I. Don't have, other than the sand and salt checks things, I guess the only update I can provide you with is that the the uh. Let's see, we're waiting for the check to pay the grant portion, I think it's fifty six hundred dollars, the leaf blower. Uh, obviously, we've paid the entire bill and we submitted way back the first of. I think it needed to be acquired by the thirtieth of June and it was like several days at most, beyond that, I sent him the paperwork to be reimbursed. So we're waiting, we haven't gotten that to my knowledge, so we've got fifty six hundred dollars coming there. Uh, this week I uh, took the uh, grants summary report in uh, Excel. That had, uh, somebody had updated to parts of two thousand and twenty and I updated it to the current. To include uh, an AIDS and uh, a grant in AIDS that we've been approved for eleven thousand dollars. That was uh, when we signed that intent back on the twenty fourth of of June, I believe this is the amount. That we are going to be allowed to get and the again, the dollar amount's eleven thousand dollars. The specifics, the document to accompany it, et cetera, I I believe will be coming in our direction in October. Uh, let's see, I'm trying to think of uh, we need to do the uh. The the two two things, we have the RFP out for the Parker Road and Hill Road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I will add and mention that subsequent to the last select court meeting that we had on that. I uh. I happened to be reading through the the grant document and noticed that the closeout date was twelve thirty of two thousand and twenty two. And I'm trying to remember when you and I were out with Jeff Nugent. I seem to recall, he said it was nine thirty or I think it's it's nine or. I think it's nine thirty or nine one, I can't remember, I think it's nine thirty, but so I emailed asking which date is valid. And I emailed it, I believe, to uh, Jeff Nugent and uh, Chris Hunt, everybody, yes, that's all I should, no, Ross Coon. Who's head of Grants and Aid and uh, Ross answered back that if we needed more time. They would be willing to be flexible, so the date that we thought we had to have it done by is a a week or two, it looks like flexibility.
Okay.
Uh, and if there's something really extraordinary, I could get another destructive heavy rainstorm. You know, there was no.
That's for the hill road project.
That's for the hill road project, so so there is time to play with, so if anybody calls you to find out about it and says, ah.
Okay.
You know, it's it's, I can't get it done by that day, it's, there's a little bit of time to play with.
Okay.
Just so you know that, uh, and what else is there about grants that I can tell you about? I just can't think of anything at the moment. Uh, if I can switch to another topic, though, the I R A that I said I couldn't do this time.
Mm-hmm.
I I just want to assure Mark that it's not going to adversely affect you. When I got the, when the state responded, that state retirement committee responded to my inquiry for the last meeting. They they go back to me after the last meeting and in it, they gave some program descriptions, there were some differences between what is on the internet. And the phraseology I got back, it looks like it's the same general program, but. This person views it differently and organizes it and they're thinking differently than is in the paperwork. Uh, and so it turns out that we, the enrollment period. Has to be on or just before October first of this year.
Oh.
So the fact that I don't have anything for you today is a non-event in terms of any adverse effect. What we were hoping to do appears can all be done as long as we do it, um, it's, you only get it on quarters, so it's, you know, January one. April one, July one and October one, so, okay, so there's no no adverse effect here.
Alright.
Uh, and I I can't think of anything else.
Alright, we'll move on, uh, next slide, it says town clerk report, I have the report from the town clerk, however, I did find it in the email list. And I had to ask the town clerk, when these taxes come in, they have to be con, I have to get a phone call to pick this up, it's another dog bite. And this came in uh, on the twelfth of August and today's the seventeenth, and it's certain things that I have to do in timely fashion, so that was a little disturbing.
Uh-huh.
Alright, we'll just continue on to town business commis- commissioner report, she wanna talk about the tree removal or whatever?
I need one here. Well, we did that, uh, there is one more tree that if the panels are put up, should come down, that's a big cherry tree. I meant to have a picture here for you, I left my tablet at home, but it's right facing the building, it's not, it's not in any way, any way. Harm the building, but it would block the light to the panel, so Mark and I will try to work all that out, plus, one more thing.
I understand you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If it comes down, there's a good chance, better than even chance, because of the size that shit could bring the bring the town some money, because it's like.
Okay, Ruth, at this time, we don't have a solar project, so I'm not apt to be be paying for removing trees that, however. If there is a tree that is, looks like it's going to damage this building and fall, there's a dangerous, of the three trees, if there's one really bad. And that needs to be taken care of.
So you don't do do any of the two?
I I would say no.
Why? You can do all the same color. Well, we just got a traditional week.
Well, we're gonna, hopefully have by, second we will have one next year.
Well, that would be nice.
And we're not gonna do this type of thing, so we're probably now the end of the year, so, you know, I don't.
Not so much, yeah, no, that's true.
I wish I had, no.
Okay, just note, you might have a point, uh, and your point is management management of the time, I believe.
I I just.
And as much as he could, well, I'll let him speak, let Mark speak to it, if he's just doing the one tree. And he can, he can hear Mark's time towards doing other things in those last eighth week is what you're driving on, I believe, probably. But you're also, you're seeing it's not in the sense of doing it now, because we're looking at probably getting.
It's a dangerous tree, yes.
Right.
Which as you mentioned, but the other ones were in light of solar system.
Okay. Right, well, there's the pines are like that, the three pines are right next to each other. The cherry tree, which I just spoke of, is up on the hill, but let me ask Mark, how much more, how much time's involved to do those trees? Explain it specifically.
I I can, I can get those three down and cut up the today.
I want to answer.
But he is, it's called Phil's lumber scam. And I got educated when I tried to tell him how to take the tree down.
So, like, like it's a fact that the batteries running out.
Okay.
Well, how do we, how do we wanna address this now, I didn't realize you could all do this one project, I don't wanna. I I I'm I'm concerned that we're gonna, I just don't wanna set a precedent that we're gonna do this, this and this in case we do that, I don't want that. I don't wanna say we're removing trees in case we do so.
I'm more, well, Lance did it, but I'm more concerned about what what Mark has planned for time, and if he. He needs to speak to that, I don't want to cut the trees down.
I I, my thoughts are on that frame and tour. On the other hand, I can understand if if there's free time. If if we're not up against it to complete a project within a timeframe and you've got flexibility. Then I'd say. But I will say, it is irritating as hell to to know where we stand on things. And the fact that we keep saying, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. And it just seems like that information flies over someone's head and it's, it it is starting to test patience. But whatever that's worth.
Yeah, we said it earlier, we don't wanna talk about projects that we're not doing, but Mark, um.
It was table for this meeting, uh.
Right, it was table for this meeting.
Uh, yeah, so wasn't the gentleman.
Okay, well, yes, we did, okay, um, so. When when it, when are they, when are they close, when are they closed, what are the dates?
They're they're closed next from Thursday, Friday, Thursday.
What days, what are the dates?
Next week, sixth, fifth, sixth, seventh day.
Okay, if we return the machine at the end of an eighth week, it would be in that week, so it would be the very end if. I I could say if it's an issue where you have the time and you have all the other jobs done, I'm not, but.
Wouldn't make it your high priority, if you have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd say.
Because it to to Stan's point. You're gonna cut the trees down, I would kill him to get you a machine now.
Alright, so that's that's, okay.
Okay, I'm I'm I'm, I'm only concerned, real real concerned about electric.
Right.
We can work that out. Oh, you want me to tell you, right, okay, I have one minute, that's all I need, right, you want me to, okay, there I go.
You're dying for it.
I just wanted to make, put on record, a shout out to Dave Parker fixing the stair at the church and Barbara Born's leadership in doing the uh, welcome center event this weekend. Uh, she's doing it again.
She's on vacation, she's not gonna be there.
Oh, excuse me, forget it, Barbara.
It's Leanne Parker.
Oh, well, Leanne, thank you, I just wanted to publicly thank those two people, the people that are doing that, because every time we get help from the community, from our community, it's a great thing. Uh, the rest I forgot to say is very quick.
Okay, could you uh, could you say the names again, if you want them?
Sure. Leanne Parker.
Uh-huh.
And David Parker, her husband.
Okay, for fixing the stairs.
Replacing the stairs and running the fundraiser at the welcome center.
Leanne's.
They they did, David did the stairs and Leanne's running the uh, the welcome center fundraiser.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, very quickly, I remember this meeting was the eighty three tomorrow morning, I'll I wanna re-review those air air heat exchanges. That have gotten a crawl, like, you know what, but he's, his reason for being there is he's gonna replace the timer clock that's swinging in the breeze. They have no, you have no way of setting the the timer for the air air exchanges. Next Tuesday, the heat comes again installed and now that since uh, uh, Admiral's motion, which got the. Got the uh, the bid for the install of the electric, that's gonna happen probably. The first of September, thirty first, first and second of September, right in that little window right there. And when he's done with that, then he's gonna, again, to come back and fix that, am I going too fast, Peter?
No, I was sneezing and I realized the mic was on.
Okay, and lastly, after he's done with that, and he's already already, already got the part and fixed the panel for the pump that broke weeks back, that's all I got.
Alright, so I'm gonna move on to select board chair report, very limited, I told you we need to buy the animal bike reports thing I got from working on the health. Um, set and there are some volunteers that are stepping forward, um, any other reports or discussions from the select board members, I'm gonna ask to table this discussion about the email addresses. Um, I still have, I know we tabled it the last time, I'm still carrying with me, but it's not a time time necessary, is that alright with everyone?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, around schoolhouse window repair, I don't think we've gotten a bill, but uh, the Borns are on vacation, so I don't, you know, know about that. Uh, communications, uh, regular mail, uh, was just, no, we don't have anything regular mail or emails, we shared that, I'm gonna go to the pay orders. Okay, let's see. I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable order. Uh, twenty three oh seven dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty two, in the amount of nineteen thousand. Thirty five dollars and twenty six cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce Miller, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable order twenty three oh seven for nineteen thousand, thirty five dollars and twenty six cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, the motion passes. That's enough, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty three zero eight. Dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty two. In the amount of one thousand, eight hundred, twenty dollars and thirty cents, may I have a second? Second, seconded by Mr. Nova, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty three oh eight for one thousand, eight hundred, twenty dollars and thirty cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Let's find that, okay, uh, agenda for the meeting for September seventh would be the RFP for the FEMA work on Parker Road. The RFP for the Hill Road granted work, we can talk about the email, um. We will confirm the information about the Alta lease and.
Also wait for hydraulic study for the, let me not recall.
And the hydraulic study.
Hopefully by.
Okay, R, well, that would, we would put that in the paper, but the RFPs were open for the other two, if he gets me the RFP early, yeah. Yeah. Okay, any other items that we maybe need to discuss with him?
Like to offer one comment?
Yes, sir.
Back when I was going over the numbers for the, uh, the daycare center. And I indicated that the expenditures were eight thousand plus greater than the budgeted amount. So we're on a cash base, so at some times of the year, we're gonna have stuff that is in the account that hasn't been withdrawn prior year. So. I wish to clarify and I was not at that time indicating that the account at any time during the year was in red.
No.
Okay.
All right. And, yeah.
I'm sorry, I, that was confusing.
Um, Stan Nogo was just commenting that during the discussion of, uh. When we were talking about ARPA and the Sunny Lane Daycare expenditures. He did not indicate in any way that the, that the town went in the red in spending for repairs on that building.
Oh, good, okay.
All right, um, anything else at this time? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the C D's meeting. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of charge signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned nine twenty-six, please. Thank you very much.